Welcome, everyone. I call the October 12th, 2021 regular city council meeting to order. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Please unmute your microphones and turn off your video while we display the banner. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge the remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the City Clerk's Office via link in the agenda. At this point, we'll take a moment to call the role of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McCollough.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
And Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
Thank you all present.
Great. So the first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities.
Just one moment, please.
And here we are. So we have the Septic Sense Workshop, October 14th, 6 to 8 p.m. Learn how to extend the lifespan of your septic system and ask questions of a leading septic specialist at this free online workshop. So register at www.bothwa.gov/SepticSense. And then we have Celebrate Orca Recovery Day, October 16th and 17th. So volunteer to restore habitat at one of the several events happening in the Bothell Kenmore area. Now we have our council committee reports. Does anyone have a report from one of their committees they'd like to make? Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor. I went to ETP last week, Eastside Transportation Partnership, for anybody who is watching. And we mostly discussed the legislative agenda, which I believe is up for our approval next week.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give everybody an update. We have an RPC Regional Policy Committee meeting tomorrow. Main topic on that committee will be discussing the best starts for kids amendments that will be coming forward. A couple of the amendments are just ensuring that we set caps on the dollars that are available and that we're tracking where the grants and the funding is going to ensure that we're spreading the funding across the county, across the region. So hopefully more to come on that after our meeting tomorrow, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that we will be meeting and having a talk about best starts for kids tomorrow.
On to visitor comments.
Thank you, Mayor. We had one written comment that was submitted to council for the meeting tonight that came from Jennifer Greiner. And she wrote regarding support for maintaining the usability of the North Creek sports fields. And then we have one request for live comments, and that will be from Sarah Gustafson. You give me one moment, I will panel her in for you. Coming down the hall.
Just need to get sound effects for that.
Hi, shall I begin?
You may. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Robin. My name is Sarah Gustafson. I live in Norway Hill. And I came here to talk about the budget, but recently I heard bad words about anti-racist communities. That's the group that night after night, day after day, struggled for the meaningful diversity, equity, and inclusion EI program that the current council has now embraced as your own. Like it or not, today's progress was set in motion by young, by one 25-year-old black woman and the black indigenous woman of color who supported her ideas. We needed those voices then, and we certainly need them now. Now, the budget. Last month, we heard good news and great questions from council members. Thank you, city finance staff. But we still have debts, deficits, and a general fund that's woefully under target. So let's evaluate new spending under a shared rubric, namely your 2021 council goals. Goal number one. Equity through inclusive community engagement. Please involve the public in choices about ARPA funds. Of all budget decisions, this is the most accessible and meaningful to the public because ARPA is money that we actually need to spend. Two, long-term financial stability. Why is there no council proposal to increase the general fund? Let's hear what the balance should be and why. And can we designate a reserve to pay down City Hall when the time comes? Three, maintain existing infrastructure. Returf North Creek sports fields? Absolutely yes. Embark on a $12 million rebuild of Bothell Landing? Unfortunately, no. We have a $14 million maintenance backlog. If we can't take care of what's old, why build anything new? The same goes for the new dog park and the park staffing increase. Unless you make a strong case based on equity or another council goal. And there's another solution. Propose a parks levy. Council members, I will be the first to campaign for it. If we grow our parks and our balance sheet in concert with our DEI goals, now that's a legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. If there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom and we will panel you in. I do not see anyone there.
Thank you. Next item we have is our consent agenda. Nothing was pulled, so I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Duer.
I move approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember McCollough.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Duer to move to pass the consent agenda as presented with a second by Councilmember McCollough. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCollough.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, everyone. All right, on to our next agenda item, AB 21-150. So the 2021-2022 mid-biennial budget update. So the expenditure forecast update and preliminary general fund ending fund balance analysis. And so we will be having our finance director, Chris Bothwell, with us.
Mayor, I apologize. While we were voting, we had somebody raise their hand, who is a member of the public. And I wanted to find out if you wanted to need to panel that person in for three minutes.
Yeah.
Get to the next item. Okay, my apologies. She came in a little late. All right, we're gonna bring you in.
Hi, sorry about that. I was struggling, I guess, to work the Zoom. But thank you for noticing. My name is, it's actually Elizabeth Crowley. Sorry, I'm using my daughter's Zoom account. And I'm a Bothell resident. And I did just briefly want to speak about the North Creek fields and the budget to resurface them and replace them. And I did want to speak for that. I think it's really important. We have very limited sports fields where we have a safe place for our community to gather. And if we keep letting the turf age, it will be a source of injuries. And so I would really like to make sure that we have something accessible to our community and safely safe for them so that we can have that and not have to worry about injuries during sporting events or just other community activities. So that's all I really had to say, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Mr. Bothwell and Mr. Morikawa coming down the hall.
You're just hard to hear. We can hear you, but it's very quiet.
Okay, I'll try and talk really loud, but if you have trouble hearing me, just let me know.
Much better.
So this is the part two to the mid-biennial budget update. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on operating expenditures. This is the complement to the revenue forecast updates that I presented a couple of weeks back. Then I'll do a sustainability update, and this will be to give you an update on the long-range forecast. Then I have a discretionary budget request that is coming from the Community Development Department that I will describe to you. And then I'm going to hand it over to Stephen Morikawa, our interim deputy public works director, to handle the capital updates. So one of the things that we do during the mid-biennial budget update is we review expenditures and look for items that are over budget or trending to be over budget. We've identified a few items that are either above budget or trending to be above budget. In all cases, these are items where our costs have exceeded what we had programmed into the budget. These items are described as housekeeping updates because they are required to provide the levels of service that are established in the adopted budget. So they're considered to be non-discretionary. So I'll jump right into it. The first item is employee costs. This is an inflation-related item. All of our active labor contracts prescribe a cost of living increase that is based on an inflationary index. In the published inflationary rate for 2022 was higher than we had in the budget. And so that's the result. This adjustment is the result of that. The second item is legal professional services. Our legal department utilizes the services of outside counsel for matters of specialty and to supplement staffing due to workload issues. These are really difficult to predict during budget development. We don't know what the needs are going to be in the upcoming biennium. And unfortunately, in this biennium, the needs have exceeded what was in the budget. And so the update here that we're requesting is $500,000. The next item is police department training. During the most recent legislative, state legislative session, state lawmakers created some new training requirements for law enforcement. And they actually funded those by sending money out to local jurisdictions to help with those training requirements. The city of Bothell received $194,000 from the state for that purpose. And the police department is requesting an increase in their training budget in the same amount. And the final item in this slide is professional services in the executive department. And this is to address some emergent needs. Those are the city manager recruitment and also a technology organizational study. And the value of that request is $55,000. This next slide has three requests coming from the Community Development Department. I think you've heard me say a few times that the Community Development Department is expecting record development activity in this biennium. And so these items are related to that increase in development activity. And so these are costs that increase with development activities. So the first one is engineering development review. The department utilizes the services of outside consultants for some aspects of development review. As we see more development activity, the need for those services increases. And so that is why this request is in here. The second item is credit card transaction fees or merchant fees. As we see more development activity, we see more of our customers wanting to use a credit card to pay their fees. And so these fees increase as well. It should be noted that the city is scheduled to move on to a new system that will allow us to charge these fees through to users. That is a limitation of our current system. And so this is a line item in our budget will go away once that new system is implemented. And the final item is advertising and professional services. So there are certain types of development that the city needs to advertise to the community. And so the need for those services increases with development activity. And then the professional services item is the department's seeking a restoration of a professional services budget that they utilize to help with studies that are directed by the council. They're expecting to see those in 2022. And so they're requesting a restoration of part of that budget. So there's hundreds of counts that we manage in the general fund, and those are all the updates I have for you. So unless there's any questions, I'll move on to sustainability.
I think we did have a couple of questions. Councilmember McCollough.
Yes, thank you. I looked at what was, let's see, it was a train for the police department at $194,000. And I wanted to know what what kind of training was required? Did it come from the legislature as far as what we need to do in training? Or what exactly kind of training did we do?
That's a great question, and I don't know if we have somebody that we can panel in from the police department to help with that question.
But you can get back to me.
Okay, we'll get back to you. Definitely, I'll reach out to him and we'll email out a response to the entire council.
Thank you.
Chris, I have Clint Beck, deputy police chief, with his hand raised, so I could bring him in if you'd like.
Great.
There you go. He's walking down the hall.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes. Councilmember McCollough, good question. You know, those are things that we're still working on, you know, what the specific trains are going to be. But you know, it's going to be for our new officers that are coming on and also our veteran officers. And it's going to cover a lot of that use of force, changes in legislation in regards to interviewing, contact of suspects, you know, all those different bills that we're still kind of drafting our policies on and making those changes to make sure we're in compliance with all of them. So I mean, we can definitely work with Chris, try to get a more specific list on what some of those trainings will be.
I know there were a lot of bills that came out of legislature, Clint, and I would appreciate when you finally get, you know, kind of a summary of them to know those as well. Because I think it's important for our public to know that we are updating our police in their train to kind of respond to the concerns we've had over time.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes, thanks, Director Bothwell. I had a question. We, as a council, approved a policy where community development or permitting is supposed to pay for itself. Clearly, it's not if we have a $600,000 bill for credit card fees. And then the additional need for permitting specialists. So can you explain what we might do or how what we need to change in order to make that policy actually be true to what the intent was?
Yes, I can speak to that. So on the credit card fee, the fact that we aren't allowed to charge those or we don't, that we can't charge those through, that's a limitation in the mybuildingpermit.com system that we're using. And I think it's one of maybe several reasons. It could be the only reason that we're scheduled to move away from that. It's so that we can recoup those fees from users that choose to use a credit card to pay their fees. I know that the department and Michael Cotterman will be on a little bit later in this presentation, or we can get him in now. But I know that they had a study performed by a consultant that came up with a methodology to recover all of the costs associated with satisfying the needs of development. And they have a methodology that's there, and it's very detailed. And it's been probably a year and a half since we looked at it, but my recollection is that it's very detailed. And it is designed to recapture all of their costs. So I think I would say, and Michael might be able to speak in more detail to that. But I would say that the credit card issue is the outlier. I think that they are recovering all of their costs. The $635,000 ad, that was the first item on that slide with community development on it. Those fees would be recouped through fees charged to folks that are the users or customers of development services. And so we saw a big increase in the value of the revenue for development services revenues as well. And so that's kind of an offset to that. But I think, and maybe Michael might have something to add, but I do think that they're recapturing all of their costs for everything except credit card merchant fees. And we do have a plan to kind of move towards something that will help us to recapture those as well.
But that first line item, can you go back to that slide? The development review, that should also be covered by permit fees, no?
Yes, it is. So those are services that I believe they utilize to supplement staffing. So presumably, when they're servicing those customers, they would be part of that same model to recapture our costs associated with with the services that we're providing. It just rather than being provided by an employee, some of those things would be done by a consultant.
But then why isn't it an ad? If we're charging for that fee, why isn't it an add to the budget?
Well, because it's a great question. We need authority on both sides of the transaction. So we need authority on the expenditure side to spend it. If we were adding an employee, it would be really similar. We would say we need, you know, $300,000 to add an employee for the biennium or something like that. This is similar. It's just not an employee line item. It's a consultant line item.
So this isn't actually adding to our deficit. This isn't part of the $1.3 million deficit that we're running right now.
Uh, no, not really, because it's offset by fees.
Okay, that's what I, it was confusing and I wanted to clarify, so.
I apologize. We split the revenue and the expenditure up, and sometimes there's that matching that's lost. So great question. I apologize for that.
No, that's great. Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions.
All right.
Actually, Councilmember Thompson.
Sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to fake you out. Hey, Chris, question for you. So when we go through this, and it looks like we're projecting a $1.3 million deficit this year. When we go back a couple of weeks ago to the significant variances in the revenue, our sales tax was up 4.8 million and development services charges were up 5.8 million for general fund revenues. And the expenses that are additional listed here don't come anywhere near those numbers. So I'm just not sure how we got to the math of a whole lot of extra revenue, less extra expenses and a deficit.
That is a great question. And I'm not going to make you wait, but it is kind of described on a future slide, so I will go into it in a little more detail. There's a couple of assumptions that are in the budget that aren't necessarily highlighted yet in the presentation. One of those is that the adopted budget assumes some new revenue or some revenue enhancements of about $2 million per year. So we're actually in the analysis that resulted in the $1.3 million deficit. We're pulling those back out because we want to kind of have a baseline. That would require additional council action. And what we're trying to present is a baseline based on what we currently have with these sort of benign updates. And the other thing is that we have a very large contribution to capital when there's over $2 million that's going to be funded out of the general fund in the adopted budget for the fire stations when that budget was increased. So those are two very large moving parts that make up the difference that you're seeing there between, I suspect that you didn't see the reduction in the deficit that you had hoped to see, and those two items are primarily attributable to that.
Okay, I had thought that the additional revenue that we talked about was contingent on us doing something at the end of this year. I thought that those assumptions weren't baked in for the first year.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Then I guess I don't understand how that's affecting this year's budget. If there were additional revenue enhancements, but they weren't set to take effect until 2022, how are they affecting this year's budget?
I'm not sure. Okay, well, I apologize. So I was trying to relate the $1.3 million deficit.
Yeah. But you also said there's another slide coming up, so like, why don't we wait and see if that clears it up for me? And I can ask the question again if it doesn't.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure I'm asking the same question that you're answering. So I'll wait until there's a slide and then I can look at it.
Okay, it's coming right up.
Cool. The next time we do this, can we get the expenditure update and the revenue updates at the same time?
Yeah, I apologize for that. We kind of retooled it at the last minute for a couple of reasons and, yeah.
Cool. The adjustment due to cost of living was like CPI higher than we expected? Like, I don't understand how that wasn't budgeted.
Yeah, well, we assumed so. So inflation was supposed to be, for really smart people that are doing are creating inflation estimates or CPIW estimates at the county and at the state, where everybody was kind of thinking that it would be around 2%, 2.5%. So that's what we had in the adopted budget.
Okay.
The number came back at 6.3.
Wow.
And that's 80% of our general fund is employee costs, so.
Okay, and I had one other question. I don't know what kind of development we need to advertise to. And I don't want to take up a bunch of time right now, but like Director Cotterman, if you're there, maybe you could just tell me the next time we talk, because I don't get that.
Advertising budget, is that the question?
Yeah, like.
We have to, we have to, we do public notices for projects.
Ah, okay.
So mailings and that sort of thing. We recoup those costs, but just like the other fees, the development review fees that Director Bothwell was talking about, those are pass-through costs. So we have to have enough in our budget to show that we can have those expenditures, then recoup the costs that go back into the general fund.
I'm not challenging it. I was just wondering, like, you know, we've kind of got a monopoly on development in the city of Bothell. Like, what do we need to advertise for? But now I understand. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the sustainability update. And this is an update on the status of the general fund before and after the mid-biennial budget updates. So the adopted budget, this is what we currently have adopted. This doesn't include any of the updates for the revenue forecast or for the housekeeping expenditure items that I just mentioned. We currently have an adopted general fund deficit of $4.5 million. We have a projected ending fund balance of $9.1 million. And we have calculated our ending fund balance target to be $14.2 million. These numbers are from the adjusted budget. So this does include the revenue forecast updates and the housekeeping adjustments that I just talked about. The assumptions are really important here. The assumptions for this analysis is that 2022 service levels and employee count are sustained, so there aren't any of the add-backs in this budget. It also assumes that the revenue enhancements that were scheduled to happen in 2022 do not happen. And so the result of that is the general fund deficit goes down to $1.3 million. The ending fund balance is projected to be $12.4 and the target is calculated at 15.2. This slide shows a side-by-side of the adopted and the adjusted budget. So you can see the comparison in operating deficit and adjusted budget. And then that final line item, the ending fund balance shortfall went down from over $5 million to under $3 million. And this just highlights the improvement in the economic forecast. And this just highlights the the improvement in the economic forecast. So this final slider, the final data point that I want to introduce for the sustainability is the ongoing general fund operating deficit for the years 2023 through 2026. The same assumptions apply here. It assumes no changes to service levels or revenue enhancements. And the revised deficit on an ongoing basis is about $300,000 per year. And the thing I want to highlight is that this number was closer to $2 million a couple of years ago. So the city's financial condition has improved significantly in the last couple of years. And a portion of that is a better economic outlook. But really, the the most the biggest piece of this is some of the difficult decisions that the council and the government, the administration has has made over the last couple of years to shore this up. And I want to conclude this section with just some kind of general observations. The first is to highlight the significant improvement in the long term forecast. It's really a remarkable accomplishment, and I think that it deserves to be highlighted. I want to throw in an additional consideration, and this is the general fund underspend. So you may have noticed in your packet, and there was a data point in there that the general fund tends to underspend its budget by approximately $750,000 per year on average over the last four years. So when we look at an operating deficit of approximately $300,000 on an ongoing basis, but then we also look at the underspend in the general fund, there's a very good chance that we will end up in the future with a very manageable operating deficit like we're showing, that we actually end up really flat where expenses and revenues kind of offset in most years. Or there'll be kind of a slight fluctuation just based on the state of the the state of the economy and those kinds of things. But this is really a good news story. I think that this is it's really a really a remarkable thing. And we're also growing our reserves at the same time, which is also a really remarkable thing. I do want to present there is kind of a challenge associated with this too, and it's kind of a challenge opportunity thing. The forecast doesn't account for economic cycles. So we try to predict economic cycles for the current budget. So for the current biennium, we're trying to figure out what's going to happen, and we do predict like a recession or a boom or whatever it is. Beyond that, the last four years of the long range forecast, we don't try and predict it. We just apply averages. And so there will be some fluctuations. So in some years, that operating deficit may be lower. And in some years, it might not. It may be a surplus. Excuse me, it might be a bigger deficit or it might be a surplus in some years. And we don't try to predict that four years out or six years out. And what that does, the reason that I bring that up is because I wanted to highlight the the value of a budget stabilization reserve. It can help us to weather some of those economic downturns a little more gracefully. And it's really just kind of a shameless plug for a budget stabilization fund. And so that's kind of it. So that brings us to kind of the end of the routine aspects of the mid biennial budget update. Our next steps are to hear from you about the discretionary changes that you'd like to see in the budget. And I know there's a that's going to be the primary conversation tonight. After that, we're going to crunch the numbers and balance the budget and try to include the things that you'd like to see in that budget and come back to you with a proposal that hopefully meets your needs. And then the final item is something that we have to do by policy. So by policy, staff needs to bring back a proposal to the council to fund the fund balance shortfall in the general fund. So I just want to give you a heads up that that's going to be part of the proposal. Policy says we have to do that. And so you're going to see that later when the proposal comes back to you as well. We do have one discretionary budget request, and this is coming from the community development department. And the reason that I'm highlighting this separately is that the first items that I talked about were housekeeping items. They were largely non discretionary and they were required to implement the budget, the policy direction that was in the budget. This discretionary item is a little bit different in that there is kind of a question that we want to ask you tonight. So community development is predicting a record biennium. And so they are asking for some additional staff members to be able to help them service that volume that they're expecting to see and that they're already seeing. And so they're asking for two permanent additions to staff. And the first one is a senior building inspector and the second one is a senior construction inspector. The estimated cost in this biennium is approximately $360,000. And the ongoing annual cost of this request is $270,000. And we are looking for direction from you as to whether or not you'd like to see this in the final the mid biennial budget proposal. And I have Michael Cotterman, if you could panel him in to answer any questions on this one.
Yeah, Councilmember Dur.
My my little card won't show up. Again, it begs the question, are these items that will be paid for?
Yeah, and I apologize. I recognize now in hindsight that when I read to all kind of the presentation that's separating the revenue from the expenditures, particularly in this area where we have that matching, I apologize for that. But these will be covered with the additional development services revenues that that were in the revenue forecast.
Well, that makes the decision much easier. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Well, I have two questions, one related to the the for community development. So should I hit that one first and save my question other question for later? So I guess I am concerned I see the building that's going on around Bothell. And I'm thinking, yeah, that makes sense over the next couple of years. Do we have anybody on staff that is, I don't want to say close to retirement, but is getting close to retirement? Because we're talking about somebody who's permanent. I'm wondering how permanent is if we were to have an economic downturn. Do are we looking at some of our current staff hitting retirement and creating some vacancies?
That's a great question. Is Michael paneling in?
I'm here, Chris.
Thank you.
Would you like me to take that question?
Yes, please.
Well, thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor Zorn. We never know for sure, but there's always the possibility of some attrition in the staffing. And anytime that we do have a vacancy, we always reevaluate at that time and determine whether or not we should fill that vacancy. So we are looking ahead. We have enough work in the pipeline that would keep a fourth inspector busy for at least the next two years. And we anticipate that there will be some level of similar development activity that'll be going on for a while unless we hit a big, you know, recession, an economic, one of those down cycles, which is always a possibility, and we make adjustments at that time. We never want to lay people off, but that's always a possibility. We do try to forecast as best we can, but our needs are going to be. This is really and and I should point out that the inspectors are really in two departments. The building inspector is in the community development department. The construction inspector is in the public works department. But it's all part of our development services group. And we've worked very closely among the three departments that are involved in development services, community development, public works and and fire prevention. And we looked at what our needs are going to be going forward. And the the issue is really more about the the level of activity we're anticipating sometime in the first or second quarter of 22 and being able to maintain a level of service that we currently provide to all of our applicants. And that includes homeowners that are doing home improvements, a water heater, a deck, a fence, what have you, up to and including large projects that are being developed. We have close to 10 to 12 large projects that are going to be under construction over the next couple of years. So we're pretty sure we're going to have the 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 level of activity and the need the staffing to to take care of that. I realize that's a lot more than you asked in your question, but there's a lot of things that have to be considered as part of that. So I can't say definitely that we'll have someone retire. But if we do, we will evaluate at that time whether we need to fill that position.
Well, I appreciate that answer. I know that you're not clairvoyant and you you can't see into the future. You did answer a question that's been on my mind, looking at the new development and then the level that we're encouraging people to put ADUs onto their homes. We've thrown that into the mix and I've been that has been a thought in my mind of I wonder if we're going to need more staff to do inspection and you you already answered that question. But when we use the phrase permanent, I start to think, you know, nothing is permanent, nothing is absolute. But do we have? What are the words that I'm looking for? Do we have some flexibility to make a position permanent in difficult times without it costing anyone personal personal extra hardship? So I I think what you're telling me is, yes, you've put all that together and you're structuring that to both meet the demands of today and be prepared for what could be coming down the pipeline. So thank you.
And the other side of that coin is we also, because we are collecting permit fees, we need to provide a level of service that we're we're charging for. So we're trying to meet that as well.
It is a perpetual thing that you always hear of. I know it's a good problem to have.
Yes. Yes, I'd much rather have this problem than the opposite problem.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes, thank you. I oops, am I on mute?
Nope, you're good.
Okay, so I just wanted to go back to the stabilization reserve. Is there some money in that or how does I mean, if we got to a recession, how does that work?
That's a great question. So a budget stabilization fund would be essentially a fund that we would establish that we would put some seed funding into. And then it's what we generally put kind of general fund money into it or money that looks like general fund money. It has very few strings attached to it. And so if we get so it serves two purposes. The first is that we get to use it in the calculation of whether or not we achieve the minimum fund balance target. So if we're in the general fund, we're right at our minimum fund balance target and then we budget a deficit. And we actually see that deficit. We get to use the the money that's sitting in the budget stabilization fund to in that calculation. So we would still be able to achieve presumably as long as the deficit wasn't too big, we would be able to achieve our minimum fund balance target. It also can be used for any other purpose. So if we're adopting a really difficult budget, we're expecting a recession, you can actually budget a part of that to to for continuity of operations or those kinds of things. So it's it's a very flexible thing and it serves a couple of purposes. So but we would what we would do is we would put some seed funding in a separate fund. The council can decide what the restrictions are, when it can be used, those kinds of things. But it really sits there until the council decides to budget it. But in the meantime, we get to use it in the calculation of our minimum fund balance target. And it provides, you know, a cushion so that when we go into a recession or, you know, maybe a pandemic hits and we're we're grappling with what the, you know, financial ramifications with that that might be. It maybe allows us a little bit of we can we can be a little more measured in our response to it rather than being really reactionary to to something like that.
Thank you. That that really helps. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor. It's funny, my first thought when I looked at this was what if we got a regular building inspector instead of a senior one or even a junior? Would that be cheaper? That's not a question. That's just me amusing myself. I guess my concern with this is it's nice to hear us talk about what's going on into 2022, but we are in a boom cycle right now and development revenues are way up right now. And I guess my concern is that we're reacting to what's already happened as opposed to what's coming down the pipe. Because it's hard to lay people off. Like, it's easy to add FTEs, but letting people go is personal because we work with them and they have families and we don't like it. So it's just it's a lot easier to add something than it is to make it go away. I mean, have we projected out past 2022? Is that, I mean, an exercise in futility? I guess help me feel better about this.
So I think that Michael probably has something to offer here too. But I will say that in the long range financial forecast, we use after 2022, we kind of normalize the results. And so we use an average. So it doesn't. So the forecast isn't based on record year after record year after record year. And I'm sure Michael has something to add about how they how they forecast. I think there's you look at the pipeline constantly and think about what the timeline is for for projects and stuff. I'm sure he has more information.
Yes, and we have. We have looked out beyond 22. The projects that we're looking at right now will easily go for the next couple of years, and some of them will go into year three. So we're looking 22, 23, and 24. And depending on how they come in, and we don't have any control over that, obviously. And if the bottom falls out of everything, then projects might stop as well. There's always that possibility. I can tell you that, you know, we're we're looking at some projects that the size of the projects that we're looking at are something that we really haven't seen in this volume in the city before. We have four new buildings at Husky Village, the redevelopment project there. We have a new academic building on campus that's going to be under construction soon. We have the Seattle Times site, the Avalon Bay project that's 1,000, close to about 900 plus units. That's going to take a couple of years in and of itself. That'll be done in phases. There are four buildings there. Couple of weeks ago, we just received an application for the TIAA site in Canyon Park for four new office buildings there for a little less than a quarter of a million square feet. We don't know what the phasing of those might be. We also have Juno Therapeutics that's planning a 65,000 square foot building on their campus. We have the two new fire stations that are coming on board. We have the Sama project. We have Block D. Within that three years, we may see something on P South. So just looking at those, that's three years, almost three years worth of work right there that would keep four inspectors busy. That's that's how we've projected that. And I will say in response to your your initial comment, Councilmember Thompson, I had to lay two people off last year. It's not something that I take lightly or that and none of us do, and I know you know that. We do take all that into consideration. We don't want to overstaff and then have to lay people off. By the same token, we do have an obligation to provide a level of service and what we're for what we're collecting in our permit fees. So we're trying to balance those items.
No, absolutely. I I just wanted a little bit more context because I figured you would have a really good explanation for it. So thank you for that. And I mean, the development services revenue budget adjustment was like over 5 million more than we expected. So like, we're doing okay on that trade, I think.
Where as of the end of the third quarter of this year, we're already almost 1.8 million ahead of what we had projected for our revenues for this year. Just in the permit revenues.
Awesome.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Bothwell and Katterman for clarifying a few of the questions that I was going to raise. I did want to ask, when was the last time the city saw an economic cycle downturn that affected our reserves?
I apologize. I had a little trouble with audio. Did you ask when we had the last economic downturn that did affect reserves?
Yes.
That's a great question. And quite honestly, are the reserves? So it's it's going to be before my time. But I can tell you that the reserves have been used for a lot of capital needs, including City Hall and some other some other investments in the downtown development and and things like that. That's my understanding of how some of our reserves have have kind of gotten to some pretty low levels. But I don't know how my it's it's kind of difficult. Since I wasn't here, it's kind of difficult to parse that out from economic cycle impacts. We can probably do that analysis, but it would be a pretty it would be kind of a deep dive.
Yeah, I think Director Katterman, he in the way he answered Councilmember Thompson, some of my concern with long term review and understanding of that cycle. I mean, I believe we're past the timeframe of when we typically would see a 10 year cycle of a downturn in construction. We're past that now, but there are some that are predicting something could potentially come in the next couple of years. And so I'm just thankful and I'm glad to hear that you guys are thinking through that and I'm and having those conversations with some of these larger projects because if the larger project shut down, then that causes a much bigger trickle effect, right? They're typically the first ones to slow down. And I'm also glad to hear that, you know, you dub Bothell, I believe those are those are all funded projects, if I'm not mistaken. And so those projects would continue to probably most likely move forward so that we would be okay with the the spend here. So I also want to, I mean, I know that you're probably going to get into the reserves and some more financial stuff. Is that correct, Director Bothwell? In your last couple of slides here? Or is this it for you?
I apologize. There was, sounded like a fire truck went by. Um, this is my last slide. Is that, was that the question?
Yeah. So if, if, if this is your last slide, then I did have a question on, um, where a city our size, um, where our reserve should be. Um, in order to ensure, like, obviously pandemic a- aside, um, if we do have an economic downturn and we're still kind of fighting through the pandemic, professionally, where should we be? Um, and how do we ensure, uh, that we put ourselves moving forward in a position to be able to withstand that and not, um, lay a bunch of people off and/or, uh, not be able to provide, as Director Katterman, uh, said, the level of service that our community expects from us?
That's a great question. So continuity of services is super important to a local government. And so that's why our reserve policy is a 90-day operating reserve in the general fund, uh, and in any other fund that has, uh, operations in it. Um, they have a reserve requirement as well. That's based on a, a number of days of operations. Um, those are primarily, those reserves are primarily there to, um, to, to, to address short-term revenue fluctuations. So if we go into a major recession, um, you know, additional reserves are really useful. Because our minimum fund balance target is set at 90 days of operating reserve. Um, we can really quickly with a deficit budget, we can really quickly fall below that. And so if we set aside additional, uh, reserves, and it's really specific on, you know, what a, what a government, local government should do is really specific to kind of your revenue mix and what your operations look like. Um, but any additional money that we can set aside will help us weather those events and give us a little bit more time. So we don't have to be super reactive. Um, uh, you know, there's a kind of a philosophical question. If we plan for a recession or if we plan for a depression or if we plan for some, you know, this, the idea that a pandemic would affect the city's finances the way it has, or that that would be a relevant topic. You know, these, these, there's a lot of unknowns. And I think as we get into the, um, next year, when we do budget development, um, we'll get into our financial policies again, um, because we need to look at, by policy, we're going to update those every time we do budget development. And I think it's a really great conversation for us to have is what is, what are the appropriate amount of reserves? The city increased them from a 60-day reserve to a 90-day reserve, um, in February of 2020. Um, and so if we can get to that level, I think that that's an incredible improvement for this local government. Uh, but I think we need to maybe do it. I mean, I think your comment is a really, a really solid one. Like, I think we should take a look at it and see what is that the appropriate reserve for this local government or does it need to be more? Um, my pitch for a budget stabilization fund is primarily so that we can weather the, uh, you know, a, a deficit budget, a small deficit, or we could feel comfortable budgeting a small deficit, um, or have some additional resources out there. And I think that, that, that part of that is just the timeliness of making that statement because we do have the property sale proceeds, which is a kind of unique opportunity. Um, and so that's kind of the reason for my pitch, but I think your, your comment is right on. I think that there's probably a deeper analysis to figure out what are, what is the right level of reserve for this organization? Um, and maybe the 90 days is enough, but maybe it's not. And I, I think that, that you're right, probably could do some work in that area.
All right. Well, thank you. Yeah. And I look forward to continuing that conversation and ensuring that, uh, that we all have the information to make, uh, the right decisions to put the city in the right path moving forward and ensure that we're always stable. And I mean, no one knows, no one can predict, but we can do our part to ensure that we at least look through things and, and making the, the best decisions possible. So thank you.
So Director Bothwell, you mentioned, you know, the stabilization fund has come up in a couple of questions. So, I mean, it's similar to the, the general fund reserve that it's, you know, not a lot of strings attached to it and it does have that flexibility. But it, it's more like above and beyond to account for those variations. And, and so that, that's kind of my question is, is, is it really for the cyclical kind of just buffering that we may see? And, uh, so it's, it's, I guess, uh, above and beyond the general fund reserve and just totally autonomous from it?
It is. Um, you know, in terms of color of money, it's kind of indistinguishable from the money that we leave in the general fund or the ending fund balance in the general fund. Um, but it, 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 it doesn't have any additional strings attached to it that aren't council imposed. So the council can decide what kinds of strings that they would like to attach to that money. Uh, maybe you use it just to, in the med, maybe it sits there, uh, and it's only to be budgeted during, you know, whatever cycle, or it could be used for, um, just in the measurement of the ending fund balance target. Um, it could be set at a level that's a percentage of operating revenue. Uh, there's really, it's, it's really kind of customizable to the needs of the government. Um, my recommendation, if we were to establish one for this, for during this budget cycle, would be to tie the strings kind of loosely. Um, it's going to require council action to do anything with the money. Uh, and so really I think that the immediate benefit that it would provide would be in the measurement of the, uh, ending fund balance target, whether or not we achieve that. Uh, by policy, our balance, our budget is balanced. Um, if we have resources that are the 90-day reserves, so the ending fund balance target plus, uh, what we expect to spend or what's budgeted. And so, um, so it would, it would help us in a number of ways to, to, um, be able to, 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 um, just balance difficult budgets essentially and meet all the, the metrics that we have for our finances that are established in policy. And, and the biggest one obviously is that minimum fund balance target.
Cause right at this point, we've kind of been using the, the 90-day fund in that capacity. But the goal would be to have that 90-day fixed and never touch it, not have it being adjusted or used, you know, unless there is a crisis or, you know, that rainy day that it's designed for and that this stabilization fund is that mechanism that grows and shrinks and adjusts. Okay.
You, you have it exactly right. Yeah. It would help us to perpetually achieve the minimum fund balance target, which is a demonstration of really good financial management. So yeah, you, you described it exactly right.
All right. It was a little nebulous when you first described it as like, that just sounds like general fund reserves. I mean, we already, we already have a big pot for that, but I, I can see, yeah, you want to get the 90 days, get that solid and never have it touched and, and moving it, uh, unless necessary. So, okay. Uh, thank you for that. And I didn't see any other questions. Oh, Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I just wanted to ask my second question. Um, we're anticipating, uh, three, one, thank you for that last explanation. Made notes, super helpful. Um, but when we talk about anticipating right now at $300,000 a year deficit, is that just based on normal inflation? Because I kind of would like worst case scenario, what would we be looking at over time as well? You know, our range to be bracing for?
Yeah. Great question. And yes, it's based on average inflation. So what we do is we take the, uh, economist estimates where they project out what inflation for the Puget Sound area is going to be. Uh, and we average that and apply that to, to the last four years of the, um, uh, of the model. There are some places where we carve it out a little bit differently. So like, you know, we apply, trying to think of a good example. So we don't, healthcare tends to, to, you know, some of our benefits tend to increase faster than inflation. And so we make some small adjustments for those kinds of things. But in general, we use like the average, uh, of what we find for economists projecting for inflation. We could definitely say, we could, it would be really easy to tweak the model a little bit, add like a 1% additional inflation or to kind of model the effects of a recession. Um, we could definitely do that. Um, it's something we're not necessarily accustomed to do, but the model is really flexible and it would be really easy to do that. Um, and maybe that's something I'm going to bookmark that because I think that that might be a really great exercise for us to take a look at during, uh, budget development next, uh, in, oh gosh, that's less than a year away. Um, so yeah, but, but to answer your question, it is just the average.
Well, I, I, I certainly don't want to give you busy work, but, um, uh, anticipating a two to 2.5 inflation and ending up with a 6.3% inflation, it's kind of a big jump. I mean, it's not double digits yet, but to me that's kind of a big jump. Um, so, uh, I, I, I support your, um, concern about increasing the reserve beyond 90 days and getting some flexibility where we can sustain that. And then I would kind of like to know worst case scenario. It's good to know the average of trends. But if we were to look at the worst case scenario, what, what, what might we, what might we be bracing ourselves for?
I think it would be a really useful analysis and it's something that actually I'm, I'm kind of excited that you brought up because I think we should dig into those numbers and kind of present to you like, hey, if it was, if, if inflation was significantly different, this is how it would impact us. We have a couple of things and I'm not going to geek out too much on this, but the idea that, uh, you know, property tax is limited to 1% per year. Well, if the rest of our costs are increasing at a rate significantly higher than that, what does that mean? And I'd love to be able to kind of throw that data in front of, in front of you all as we talk about things like, uh, you know, stabilization funds and that kind of thing.
Thank you. I, you know, it's, it's, uh, good to stay grounded in reality. And then, um, if there's, you know, breathing room, we will enjoy it, but it's, it's good to not be caught off guard. And I, again, I appreciate your skillset and your concern and the way you approach our finances here in city. It's, um, invaluable for all of the city. So thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Doc, Director Bothwell, I think everyone had a chance to comment, ask questions. So were you still looking for direction from council on the, the two positions?
I think we got what we needed. And do you feel like we got what we needed?
Yes, I think so. I didn't hear any, um, huge outcry not to do it. Um, so I think we have the nod to include that in the proposal.
I would agree with that.
Thanks, Council.
So do you want me to go ahead and I'm going to do capital updates? I'm going to hand it over to Stephen Markhauer for capital updates.
Please do.
All right. So Stephen's going to come online. Stephen's our interim deputy public works director and city engineer. And he's going to give you, uh, the mid-biennial budget updates for the capital.
Um, hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm trying to start my screen. Let's see. And can you see the title screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So Steve Morikawa, Capital Division Manager, no longer interim. Um, phew, did that for a few months. Um, good evening. What I'd like to do is, um, next is kind of run you quickly through the capital projects and programs that require a budget update. Um, there are 20 projects and programs and to help describe the budgetary needs, what we've done is placed them into four different buckets. Um, so what I'd like to do is try to go through this rather quickly. If you have questions, I think that perhaps the best way is to note the project you have a question on and you can come back to it after the end. Um, it's probably going to be hard for me to see you run through the screen and everything at the same time. I hope this also kind of gives you a good overview of some of the work that's been accomplished and through a COVID pandemic, no less. So we have the four buckets, budget updates, schedule update and grant competitiveness and other. So we've put the 20 projects in a category. The first category is budget updates. There are nine projects in here. The text on the screen is what in your, what is in your packet.
Hey, Steve.
Really what, oh, sorry.
It's still just on the first screen still for us, I believe.
No, it's probably taking a little while.
And you aren't in presentation mode, Steve? You're just in the regular screen now. So we can see all of the slides on the left-hand side?
Okay. Let me see if I can switch that. Sorry about this because I'm sharing. Move this, sorry. Okay. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. And then I pressed the wrong button again. Hang on. Okay. So title screen and it takes your whole screen? I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So you see the second screen just to make sure it's working?
Yep.
Okay. Four budget categories. Let me start with the first one. So budget updates is the first one. There's nine projects in this one. The text on the screen is actually what's in your packet. But really the short answer is these are the projects that need more funding. The funding doesn't necessarily all have to come from the city. Some of it will come through grant or other agencies, and I'll try to point that out as we go along. The second bucket is schedule updates. So generally we don't need more money for these projects, but essentially what we're trying to do is either spend money later than we had anticipated or perhaps propose to spend money earlier for some reason. And I'll try to go through those reasons as well. Um, again, one of the things that happened for a number of projects is they got delayed. We had assumed they would be done last year, but because of COVID and some of the impacts on scheduling, um, some of the projects had just weather delays and things. Um, they didn't get done last year in last year's budget. And because we're switching to a new budget, we have to essentially do a budget amendment. Grant competitiveness is the third bucket. We have four projects in there. Uh, we do go after grants quite a bit to fund our capital program. And sometimes when we go through the application process, even though the CFP says we're going to do it in one year, the grant agency says, can you do it one year earlier? And we're giving it a grant. And of course we nod our head. And so we have to come back and tell you that we're going to spend the money earlier rather than later. And then the last, the fourth bucket is called other, and this is where we're putting our downtown cleanup. And we never know where to put this, but it deserves a category all by itself. And I'll go into it in more detail later on. So this is the first category. Um, it's a table that shows essentially the budgets, the projects that we need more budget. In the first column says value increase, and that's not the total project cost. That's how much money more that we need. And then the next column next to it says city funding, and that's how much the city would have to contribute to that increasing cost. Okay. And what I'm going to try to do is go through quickly, um, each project just to give you an idea of why some of these are going on and give you a sense of that. And like I said, if you have a question on a project, please note it down and then at the very end we can come back to it. So lift station four is an existing sewer lift station and we're rebuilding it in place on 242nd place southeast in a little cul-de-sac. Rebuilds are sometimes more difficult to estimate. It's kind of like a kitchen remodel. Until you open up the wall, you don't necessarily know everything you're going to encounter. And unfortunately we need 151,000 more to finish this project. Well, we've kind of finished the project. So we're telling you it costed a little bit more. And this will come from the sewer utility. The total project cost was about $930,000. The annual water main re-project replaces, um, water main throughout the city that is aging. And as you guys know, in, um, when we're starting our other project, Sunrise Drive had some water failure. And we had to go back in and essentially replace the water main in that entire street, which is the $500,000 increase, and that's going to come from the water utility. The 100 Second Avenue Downtown Access Project, um, it's in the CFP listed as about a $1.1 million project and about $825,000 is coming from Sound Transit. It's to provide better pedestrian access to the new court, transit corridor that Sound Transit is going to, um, be working on. This will improve the sidewalk, um, from 185th down to the King County parking ride. Make ramps ADA compliant and provide street lighting, um, again, to create a better pedestrian access environment to get to the transit. Uh, we need $195,000. Unfortunately, designs costing us a little bit more than we anticipated in the finding stage. Sound Transit is willing for us to spend all their money upfront. Um, so in this budget cycle, we don't have to provide any more money, just increase the budget. Sound Transit will provide the funds. Likely when we go through construction, uh, we will have to figure out how much more we need to toss in. And we will talk about that when we go through our CFP and budget process early next year. We're starting the process early next year. The Northeast 185th Improvement Project, um, is essentially, um, the Sound Transit project. That's going to create that transit corridor along 185th from Botha Way to Beardsley Boulevard. The Northeast 185th Improvement Project is essentially the Sound Transit project that's going to create that transit corridor along 185th from Botha Way to Beardsley Boulevard. They'll be providing the funding improvements through the ST3 voter approved package. It is very much specific locations being improved. As an example, they're going to put a traffic signal at 104th and 185th and a traffic signal at Beardsley and 185th. But there are a lot of stretches of this roadway that aren't going to be improved. Such as the sidewalk here that you're looking at, looking west between the fire station and Ross Road, they're not putting in. So what we're thinking of doing or we're planning to do is use the funding that Sound Transit is going to provide as match money and go after state grant next year. And what we'd like to do is increase the scope. And what we'd like to do is do some initial planning and design work to help us compete better. And if we can get a state grant for this, we can add scope to this project that would improve more of the corridor. We could deal with like 101st, some intersection improvements. We might even be able to do some things off 185th that would contribute to easing congestion on this corridor and/or improving pedestrian access to this corridor. So the request here would be for us to actually use some of our transportation impact fee or RE2 funding to kind of prepare us to get a grant next year. The Park at Botha Landing Pedestrian Bridge, I think you guys are all aware of. We're pretty much done with the project. It was supposed to be done the year before, but got delayed. A lot of the materials and manufacturing stuff that should have occurred got delayed a little bit because of COVID impacts. So we needed to carry over the funds to this year. There is a bit of money, about $70,000 more than we thought it would cost. So our city contribution rose a little bit. But at the end of the day, it was about a $2.8 million project and the city paid about $426,000. The rest of it came from federal RCO and Department of Commerce grants. So that's kind of a cool thing. Northeast 188, Non-Motorized Improvement Project. This is the one that put a sidewalk on the south side of the roadway and bike lanes from Popkin Field up the road to 92nd Avenue Northeast. It's also pretty much complete. Again, we thought we would complete it last year, but again, we ran into some delays due to COVID weather and some complications in the project. So we needed to push funds to this year. This project actually overall is coming in on budget what we anticipated. However, not quite exactly. We needed to do more water utility work, so we are spending $44,000 more of our own water utility, but the overall project cost is about the same. So we're probably going to save about that much, if not a little bit more in transportation funds. So most of that $778,000, we thought we'd spend a year earlier, but now we're spending it this year. The Botha Way Northeast Widening Project, this project is underway in design. I think Mayor Olson caught on page 30 in our table, we said reduced need, but it's actually an increased need. So if you want to make that correction there. The project were widened, fortified lanes of Botha Way and Botha Highway between Reader Way. I don't know if you can see my mouse. Can you see the arrow?
Yeah.
So it starts at Reader Way and this is a very large project. We estimate total project cost about $55 million. We need several rounds of grants to get the funds to put it together and maybe even other sources if we can. So we've broken it into phases. The first raised phase starts in Reader Way and goes up past the 190th intersection by probably about 1,000 feet or so. The second phase starts at the Snohomish County line and goes up to 240th, just past Safeway. And then the third phase is the piece in between. So we got the $3 million grant to do the design of all phases, but unfortunately, it's not quite enough. And so how we're dealing with this is we're essentially going to go with phase one and phase two first. And we've gotten right away grant money for phase one and phase two as well. So we will finish design of phase one and two. And then in this upcoming grant cycle, we're going to try to start competing for federal grants for construction phase for phase one and phase two. We will delay the design of phase three further out because we can't afford it all in one fell swoop anyway to construct it. So we will delay some of the expenditure need for the additional cost of design. So we actually need for this budget cycle only about $38,000 to finish designer phase one and phase two and get to about 30% designing phase three. So it's all well coordinated. Likely in 2023 and beyond, when we start to move forward into design of phase three, we will need more design money and we will address that in our CFP, in our budget update next year. Let's see. Horse Creek Improvements, you guys know this has been completed for a while. Believe it or not, we have permit requirements for up to like five years to monitor and maintain the stream system to meet our permit requirements. And while the permit requirement is technically from 522 to the south because that's where the really salmon impacts would be and the nice habitat would be. We've kind of maintained everything up north as well because we want to get ahead of invasives and that sort of thing. So monitoring and maintenance work means, you know, we're trying to we're trying to tame like a natural thing and sometimes that stream doesn't do quite what we wanted to do. So we have to fix scour holes or we have to replant areas or we have to weed because invasives come down from the north and we want to make sure that plants that we want established have a good shot at being there and established. So we have money through next year and then our permit requirement stops. Unfortunately, the latest round of fixes and weeding and maintenance is a little more than we thought. So $111,000 is needed out of the stormwater facility. The last one in this group is 228 Street Widening between 35th Avenue and 39th Avenue. This project is actually a partnered project with Snohomish County. Most of the project is in their jurisdiction. We have received the federal grant for design and again, unfortunately, design is a little bit more than we thought. Our share is about 44,000. The rest of the money is coming from Snow County and I think in our original capital facility plan, we made a little error and actually the grant can pay us more money, which is good. So that's why that project is there. The total project is about $7 million. And we are working through an alternative analysis right now. So the second bucket is schedule updates. Again, sliding money forward or back, but not necessarily increasing it. The Bridge Program is our annual program that essentially takes care of, inspects those minor maintenance, provides seed money for replacement bridges for 12, 13, or 14 bridges we have in the city. This is an example where we conservatively reduce them up. We typically allocate over the last year or so because we thought that perhaps the revenue sources during COVID would be impacted. Because they were not impacted as much, we want to try to catch up with the work that we delayed. The work would allow us to continue doing things like inspection and minor repairs. And one of the big things we want to do is actually prepare for a future grant cycle for a bridge replacement. And this would help us prepare to do that and do some planning and design work for that. North Creek Trail Section 4 is one of the more complicated ones. So I'll try to get through this fairly quickly. So North Creek Trail Section 4 is on 524 between 9th on the east side and 527 on the west side. It is for non-motorized project fairly large. So we broke it into three phases to allow us to compete for multiple different grants. The first phase that's at 9th Avenue to through Centennial Park, we are starting construction this fall and we have a grant for that and we have match money for that. So that's moving along. The second phase, which goes is in the middle phase, we actually have a grant for that as well, which is targeted for, I believe, 2023. But we could use the money as early as 2022. And then we're still looking for one more piece, grant piece for the third phase. And we're actually competing right now for complete streets grants, which would finish that if we get awarded that this fall. There's also a TAP grant that we likely will compete with, which will also finish that piece if we need it. So what we're proposing here is that phase one was going to be constructed this year, phase two about two years from now, and phase three, two years beyond that. If we can get that grant, we want to build phase two and three next year. And what that would do is by putting the project together, we get some savings on scale. We might get better prices for materials and things. Mayor Olson probably knows all this stuff. By bidding it out in one project, administering it as one project rather than two, we save some time and energy. And we also, by building it a little bit earlier, we don't have to worry too much about the cost of time and money. So we think we can save a couple hundred thousand dollars of RE2 money if we can get that grant and put it out the door next year, which is what we're asking you to do is allow us to spend some RE2 money early. The 522 Stage 3 Project is the project that's going on between Kenmore and Wayne Curve. Putting in the bat lane, putting in the north side sidewalk. We're almost done. Again, we had hoped to be done last year, but that didn't quite happen. So we're moving the funds again into this budget cycle. And that's pretty much being paid through for Sound Transit money as well as we're getting reimbursed for moving some of the dry utilities like power and telecommunications. So that's what that $3.5 million represents. The Multway Boulevard Crossroads Light Rent Reorientation Project is kind of an odd little project. Believe it or not, when we first started planning multway and crossroads, LED street lighting was a real brand new thing. And PSE was not sure how to handle that. We had to work with them. And because of the newness of it, there were some things that didn't quite work out. And we have partnered to try to share some of the things we had to incur, a little bit additional cost to fix to make sure everything works right. We had thought that we would enter into agreement last year. We didn't. It took until this year. And we also needed, I think, $3,000 more. So again, we pretty much what's happening here is money we thought would spend last year, we're spending this year and hence the amendment. The last two items, Collector Corridor Safety and City Wild Child Pedestrian School and Park Zone Safety. Those are capital operating programs. They're annual programs like our Bridge Program and similar to our Bridge Program. When the onset of COVID came, we tried to reduce some of the things that we thought could wait. And some of these pedestrian crossings and school beacons we thought could wait. And since the hit to the levy as well as the RE2 wasn't as big as we thought, we would like to proceed with our program, which would allow us to do those things rather than wait to the next budget cycle to approve of them. So that's why those are in there. Okay, the third category, we're almost getting through this, is for grant competitiveness. The first one is the 228 Street Southwest Pavement Preservation Project from 2nd to 9th. You guys know we've done already about two or three sections on 228th and we're using grant money to get through this. We do have a federal grant. We thought we were going to spend the money in 2024, but this is one of those cases where they required us to do it a year early in 2023. So because of that, we have to start designing in 2022, hence the $182,000 we need to do the design one year early. The next one is probably my favorite one, Botha Everett Highway Pavement Preservation between 240th and 228th. This project to do an overlay on that section of roadway was targeted for 2027 in our CFP. There was a National Highway System Grant available. And Jack Bartman of our group applied for it and we got $1.6 million. The project is $2.2 million. In 2027, if we had gone through the normal federal grant process, they usually cap the grants at about $750,000. So by going this route and switching some of our projects, so we're going to do some other roads later and this road we're going to push up earlier. We probably got an extra $900,000 worth of grant. So that's just one of those things where we want to just spend money in a different place, so to speak, to give us more leverage for grants. The last one is again, ongoing annual projects, pavement preservation and sidewalk and walkway programs. A significant portion of each of these programs are funded through the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy. And again, a year or so ago, when we were developing our budget, we looked for areas that could absorb a hit. These were two programs that could do that. We would like to put money that we didn't see the revenue drop back in those programs to allow us flexibility to again, compete for grants. And that grant cycle is coming up. So rather than wait for the next budget cycle, it would be better for us to put it back in a little earlier to allow us to compete for more grants. Okay, and then our last one, which is our oddball, is our downtown cleanup, which is another. The map I know is kind of hard to look at. It is of our downtown. And it's north is up. This is Botha Way here. 98th goes up and sweeps to 185th. These little blobs here are cleanup sites. Like you know, we've been working at this for a long time. Good news is we're making progress, such as on Lot B, where we're able to make enough progress that the lot closed and sale, which is cool. Oops, sorry. So Lot P South here, we're getting close, cross our fingers. And if we can get this ready to go, that might be available for sale fairly soon. We are working on the Ultra Site, which is the city hall block where there was a dry cleaner here before. We are pretty much done with the investigative and characterization phase, which kind of quantifies and locates where the contamination is. And Ecology is ready for us to proceed into the cleanup phase. This is a little earlier than we thought. The type of cleanup we're going to do is a little different in our budget. We do the best we can at planning, but currently the budget kind of shows a certain amount of money every year over the next six years. But in reality, we're probably going to have to spend more money upfront and then maybe less money later on. The other site that we are working with Ecology is the Riverside Site. For some reason, we have solwings down here in the gravel parking lot at Park at Botha Landing. We are also pretty much done with the characterization phase and we want to enter into the cleanup phase. And that's probably going to cost us a little bit more, the solution we have than we anticipated as well. So unfortunately, when we did our our budget last year or the year before, the current budget, we had thought we'd need about $2.2 million in this two-year period, of which about a million would be replaced or paid for by Ecology grants. We actually, right now, we're doubling that number. 4.6 is our estimate. Ecology, we're kicking a bit more, about 1.7, but that's the increase you see there is about 2.3 million total more, of which 1.7 million of city funding is what we think we'll need through 2022. Again, if you look over our seven-year planning period, it's not necessarily more money, but it's probably more money upfront. So there's a good side and a bad side. I guess the bad side is more money upfront. The good side is we're ready to kind of start cleanup fairly sooner than we thought on the Ultra Cleanup Site, which I think is a good thing because eventually we want to market that property. Okay, so I talked a long time. I apologize. Those are the 20 project budget amendments and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Deputy Mayor's Orange.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment. We have tremendous need in this city for many, many projects. More projects than we have manpower and money to put in buckets for it. We have places where pedestrians are needing to travel and people are in motorized, live-in communities where they're in motorized wheelchairs and are driving out in the street, busy around curves and up and down hills. We have streets that are falling apart all over. And all that to say is, Steve, I'm not asking you to go out and fix it all today. I'm just feeling the pressing need as you are feeling the pressing need. And looking at inflation and the cost of what it's going to take the city to do basic projects that we, not fun stuff, but basic projects to keep people safe and on all points of Botha has my full support. And that includes ARPA money because we're looking at the cost of taking care of the city going through the roof. And so the projects that you've identified here, you have my full support on. And if we need to tap into ARPA money to make that happen, was it Jack that you said that got the grant? Oh my goodness. Give him a hug, high five. I don't know, but very, very appreciative of that hard work. So whatever we can do to make these things happen for the city and for the people of Botha. I'm not going to, I'm not going to stand in the way of. And thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor. Steve, you mentioned that Sound Transit is willing to pay upfront for one hundred and second. Is that taking away from something in the future or is that just they're giving it to us now so we can do it now?
Grant, every grant or every agency does things a little differently. As an example, some agencies require you to match. So for every dollar you spend, they pay eighty-six cents and you pay fourteen cents. Sound Transit has given us eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars toward the project and they don't care how you rebuild them. So for the city's best interest, we're going to build their money first. And then whatever else we need and we'll backfill at the end.
Okay, awesome. In terms of the downtown cleanup, I'm going to ask you a question that there's no way you'll be able to answer, but I'm curious kind of what that answer is. Like, do we have any rough idea how much more time and or money it's going to take until we don't have to talk about cleanup anymore?
Yes, sort of. Hang on. Let's see if I can look through my paper here. I guess what I would tell you is I would get back to you and like Director Bothwell says, I can send it to all the council. We do have an estimate, our best guess at this moment, what do we cost? Assuming that we basically have to finish Riverside and Ultra and we're kind of done. There are tail-end costs of the type of cleanup we're going to do. The type of cleanup we're going to do is essentially we're going to spend money upfront to put in infrastructure and do some injection, digging out some of the soil. And then every year we have to keep monitoring it and doing some injections periodically. We put little bugs in the ground and eat the bad stuff and that kind of thing. So I can give you that numbers. We project out how long we think it's going to take. Like, I think Ultra, Erin, you can correct me. I think it's something like three to five years. But we don't know. It's underground. We do the best we can. The consultant does the best they can based on their experience, but that's the best shot we have. And I think Riverside's about the same time period.
Okay. I mean, guys, I've only been here coming up on two years and I'm already sick of hearing about this. I can only imagine how it is for staff that's been here a long time, getting sick of hearing questions like that from different people. So, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give the city a shout out for the grant opportunities that you've been able to accomplish over the past years and even before. But it's just, it's amazing to hear you talk about leveraging the matching funds that we currently have and how far we're able to stretch the funds that the city does have. So whatever we can do to continue to support that, support you doing that and ensure that we're working together regionally with our partners, please keep us posted because that's what makes our dollars go much further here in the city. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'd like to congratulate you on the job that you guys are doing. You know, on the cleanup, on that permanent pavement replacement on the Botha Ever Highway. I mean, getting those funds is just tremendous. The cleanup, Mason, I've been here for 12 years and I've been hearing about it ever since. So now get ready for a long haul, buddy. But thank you, Steve, for everything you've done.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, thanks for the presentation. You know, I always, I think, using the term our finance director used earlier, geek out a little bit on presentations by you and Erin when she would present it. But, but yeah, these are the projects that just keep the city moving. Kind of, once they're all done, you don't really see or notice them. You just drive by them. They're underground. So, but they're crucial to what our city needs to keep doing business and getting everyone going where they need to do. Go and get that water when you turn on the faucet. So appreciate all the hard work of you and your staff and everyone that makes it happen and stretching our dollars as much as we can. So. And the flexibility that staff has to move things around when these opportunities arise and make some magic happen.
Thank you.
All right. So does that bring us to a close on this agenda item?
I guess I'm looking back at Director Bothwell.
Because I believe the item that we had was to discuss the full-time and we had that earlier on. And this was really kind of feeding into our ongoing discussion.
Yes, thank you. They took me out back into the waiting room. So yeah, that was it. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the feedback and all the questions.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's before we get on to the next item, AB twenty-one dash one fifty-one, we'll take five-minute break and we'll be back at eight forty-two or seven forty-two. Welcome back. We will be moving on to AB twenty-one dash one fifty-one. And I believe we have our senior analyst with us, Aurora Belly, and our interim assistant city manager, Becky Range.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen if we're ready to go.
Let's do it.
Make sure I share the right one here. Okay, can you see my presentation?
Yep.
Wonderful. So, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Aurora Belli and I'm here once again to discuss all things ARPA. So the purpose of tonight is to take a step back from specific projects that we discussed last time and discuss our overall priorities for using ARPA funds. I'm going to give you a brief background of the program, present suggested guiding principles, and then we'll end with next steps. So as you may remember, ARPA, which stands for the American Rescue Plan Act, was signed into law in March of this year. The city of Botha is slated to receive approximately thirteen point two million dollars in funding. We have received half of that money already and it is currently residing in a special revenue fund. In late September, I gave a presentation to council, which included a list of what we called early win projects. Based on the feedback that we received from council, we have decided to kind of step back from those projects and instead establish a set of guiding principles that we can use for ARPA funding. The guiding principles really demonstrate our commitment to use the ARPA fund responsibly. We will use the funds for direct community support, especially for human service needs and economic recovery. We'll use it to support city and community recovery and resilience. We will make sure to maximize our community partnerships to facilitate deployment of resources, recognizing those who were disproportionately impacted by COVID. We want to use the monies for one-time investments to reopen and facilitate recovery. When feasible, we will use eligible ARPA funding before existing city funds. And it's very important that we have sufficient staffing levels for effective implementation and internal and regional coordination and to make sure that we can complete all of the reporting requirements that come with spending the federal monies. We will always strive to make sure that our decision-making is intentionally inclusive with equitable outcomes in mind. So our goal is to use ARPA to support recovery for our residents, business community, and the city as a whole. So we have grouped the priorities into four separate areas. Human services, economic recovery, city recovery expenses, and strategic city investments. So the first category we have is human services. At this time, we are requesting an initial budget of one million dollars for human services. The monies will be used to provide financial assistance to residents for items such as rent and mortgage payments, utilities, and childcare support. We will provide financial aid to nonprofit or service agencies who have seen an increase in request for services due to the pandemic. And we will also work closely with our community navigators and or social workers to ensure that our community receives the support they need. One of the things that we have been talking about is we really understand the importance of getting assistance to the residents in a timely manner. One area of concern right now is outstanding utility bills. As you may know, on September thirtieth, a statewide moratorium for utility shut-offs expired. Now, once we have our ARPA funding approved and we're going along, we will work with community navigators to help us distribute funding. In the meantime, however, in an effort to provide immediate assistance, we are researching offering utility assistance using current staff. What that would involve is qualifying residents would complete an application for assistance, which would then be reviewed by probably me. And once it was approved, the payment for any outstanding utility bills would be sent directly to utility providers. The next bucket is economic recovery. And we are also requesting an initial funding allocation of one million dollars for this. The monies would be used for businesses to support their tourism program and would also allow us to invest in flexible gathering spaces. This would be accomplished by working with our economic navigators and supporting the Chamber of Commerce partnership programs. The last area that we're looking for funding at this time is the city administration recovery. And we're looking to spend up to five hundred thousand dollars. Monies will be used to reinstate some eliminated positions, hire additional staff to help mitigate the impacts of COVID nineteen, support community engagement, as well as the hybrid and remote workforce by installing some technology improvements and purchasing both PPE and COVID testing materials for use. Now, it's important to note that the positions that we're talking about funding with ARPA are categorized as limited-term positions. And this is due to the policy that the city has, which states that one-time revenue is to be used for one-time expenditures. And if we categorize these positions as limited term, they would qualify as one-time expenditures. However, if we call them permanent staff, they would not qualify. The last category, which I mentioned we are not requesting budget for at this time, is the strategic city investments. These are projects that are infrastructure or capital These are projects that are infrastructure or capital projects that support the community as a whole and contribute to the wealth and health of the city. The reason we're not requesting funding at this time is this is really kind of a larger conversation that needs to be had, and we think that it would be better suited to be done in 2022 while we are working on the capital facilities plan process. And lastly, we have the next steps. So, staff is looking for counsel, for direction from counsel to affirm the strategy and overall direction for the ARPA process. This will allow staff to move forward on further planning and details. One important thing to note, which I don't have a slide for, but it is in the A B, is that staff is committed to providing counsel with an update each quarter during the scorecard update, as well as any significant items that we are considering or that we need counsel guidance on as we go through the process. So, as I have stated last time, this is definitely not a one-and-done process. I anticipate that you'll be seeing me more than you may perhaps want to. So, that concludes my presentation for this evening, and I welcome any questions or concerns that you have.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Oh, we want to see you as many times as we can. I just really appreciate the thought and the care that you've put into this, and you're willing to mediate on things like connecting utility payments and providing relief there. Capital strategic investments, it's something that we overlook. We just take our streets and roads for granted, but they are an integral part of what keeps our city functioning. So, thank you for tying that into capital facilities when we get there. I have two questions. Can we add any funding to or include funding for therapeutic court services that might be connected to COVID-related cases that come before the judge? Where we can get some services alongside for people who need some resolution? Is that possible?
I am not exactly sure. We need to look into that. There is funding for mental health services, so there's a possibility that depending on the nature of the funding, it may qualify.
Okay, so we might need to pad up the human services piece if we could tie in some court services as well. And then the other question, the last question I have, is would utility payments for businesses who suffered during COVID qualify?
There is no reason they couldn't qualify. If that's how we decide to administer the program, it could apply to both residents as well as businesses.
Well, I'd be interested if the rest of council is interested in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
I want to thank you for the presentation. I think you summarized well what council was thinking in terms of spending the money. I would also be interested if there was a way to use ARPA funds for therapeutic courts, for sure. I think in terms of business utilities, I guess I would need to understand what the need was before we opened that particular Pandora's box. And I think it probably should be limited to small business, in my opinion. I assume that we couldn't afford to pay for large business utilities. And then, I know it's further on later tonight, but I am really curious if you've taken a look at some of the council proposals and evaluated which of those might use ARPA funds.
I have not evaluated the council proposals, and so that would be something, I think, more. I have focused on the proposals that were sent to us from departments before I started with the city, but I have not gone on to look and see what's on council proposals. And that would be something further than Deputy or Finance Director of Bothwell and I could look at.
Yeah, I think that's unfortunate because I think it would be really important as part of tonight's conversation if there were specific council requests that fit into the ARPA funds. I could think of a couple that are, in my mind anyway, potential, potential, I guess, economic recovery tools that I think, you know, that might change kind of the matrix of how we make those decisions. So, I don't know how that might impact the schedule, and I'm not sure. Are we, interim city manager, are we having to make decisions tonight on those council bills?
The idea is, is that if the majority of council wishes to fund a particular item, then staff will determine what the most appropriate source of that funding would be. And then we will come back to you with the mid-biennial adjustment proposal and have the funding appropriate for those different requests. We did take an initial look at some of them, and we proposed funding sources for all of the requests. And there are some that we can speak to a little bit more during that process because there are a couple of them that I am fairly certain can be covered with ARPA.
Okay, that's really helpful. I guess I got my answer then, so thanks so much for the presentation and appreciate how well you heard our priorities for the spending.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
There we go. There we are. So, when I'm looking at the negative economic impacts, some of what I see is services to dispersonally impacted communities. So, education assistance, housing support, and healthy childhood environments. I know that that's a negative impact, but when we look over on the other side at economic recovery, are we addressing particularly those disproportionately impacted communities in those needs? I see economic recovery being, and I can read through this, but I won't. But I'm wondering where that need falls. Education assistance, housing support, and healthy childhood environment. Those are the ones I would think is particularly important.
So, I don't think those are addressed specifically in the presentation that I gave this evening. Provided they are approved expenditures for ARPA, what I gave tonight definitely was not an exclusive list of what could be covered. There is a two-page list of authorized expenditure categories for ARPA funding, and I can definitely verify where those individual expenditures would qualify.
I would be very interested, Aurora, because I think that what we really want to be sure that we are including is just exactly what I said, services to disproportionately impacted communities. I want to know where that falls in all this and how we address that. When I look at economic recovery, I'm looking at support for unemployed workers, job training. How does that work?
So, with, job training is not something specifically that we have talked about. However, that is something that as we work with community navigators, it is my understanding there's quite a few programs out there to help people with job training. And so, you know, that is something that we can look into, especially as we go through and get some feedback from the community and about what we actually, what our residents are looking for. That's something that we can look into offering or helping fund, if you will.
Right. So, I think that's one of the things I would be most interested in as well, is just to see what's out there and how would these ARPA funds enhance that for our own community.
It's an excellent question and something that we will follow up with. And our goal is by having those partnerships with the community navigators, they already have that information, and they can really help guide us to where we can help the most.
Right. Well, I think you've done an excellent job, and I'm just really pleased to see that we could actually make an impact on the people in our community and the businesses. So, I'm looking forward to continuing to work on this.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Aurora, for the presentation. I wanted to talk a little bit about the looking at things through an equity lens. You brought that up. What are we doing? How are we outreach into our community to let them know that these funds would be available to them? What are we doing as a city?
So, that is not so.
I'm happy to help with that if you'd like.
Thank you. I was gonna phone a friend.
Councilmember McNeil, what a great question. We've done a little bit of preliminary research with our DEI consultant because there's a lot of overlap between the community engagement efforts that she's going to help us spearhead for the community. And she actually has brought some staff on to her team with some cultural competency that will help us do some better engagement and outreach in the community. But to be honest with you, there's a lot of work to be done there. If we're going to do really authentic and genuine engagement and reach the disproportionately impacted residents and businesses and our community, we have to enlist in some help from our community nonprofits and hire or staff up with these trusted navigators to be able to do that. Because we know that not everyone is engaging with us. They're not subscribed to our e-news. They're not coming and looking at our website. Sometimes people don't have time or resources to do that. So, a lot more details to come, but it's going to have to be a pretty thorough and a coordinated effort, and it's going to take a lot of different folks in the community to make that happen. And then that sounded pretty broad, so I don't know if that answered your question.
That did answer my question. I'm super excited and thankful to hear that we're looking at it through the DEI lens and many of the things that we're moving forward with. I also wanted to ask the question on the approval process and ensuring that that process, where you touched on that, what are we doing to make sure that it's open and transparent? Sounds like we've got that. We're going to be doing that, but what does that look like to be an open, transparent process?
The individual process, I assume you're talking about for utility assistance?
Yes.
Yeah. The actual process of setting that up yet is still to be determined. We do have other cities around us that are offering utility assistance. And so, we would go ahead and get more specific individual information from those individual cities and so that we could mirror what they are doing so that, you know, everybody is treated, you know, equally. And so, that's how we would do that, is just mirror what other cities are doing. Do you have anything extra to add to that, Becky?
No, I think that's a great way to respond to that.
Yeah.
That's great. And that's kind of the sentiment that I hear regionally when I'm working on committees and we're having discussions around DEI and how we approach, you know, human services and, you know, what human services are in which communities. And while I'll be here in Bothell, making sure and ensuring that we're taking a regional approach because we have residents of Bothell that have to go outside of our city for help, and we have others outside of our city that have to come into our city for help. And so, it's just ensuring that we have an open and transparent process. We're engaging with the community. It sounds like we're approaching that. It sounds like we're working on that. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm super excited for the federal government to put these funds forward and to have this much money available to the residents of Bothell. It means a lot, and I think we can do a lot of good within our community and help a lot of folks.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you for the presentation. To follow up on Councilmember McNeil's, how are we going to reach out? Are we going to reach out to the schools at all? Because we can reach out to the navigators, and they have their certain clientele. But I think if we reached out to some of the schools, they probably have a better handle on who needs what. So, it's just a question.
I can see Becky shaking her head. Definitely reaching out to the schools would be something that we should do. I think you were spot on that they know who in their communities need help, and that would be a great way for us to get connected to those residents and those individuals.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you for everything you guys are doing for this.
Thank you.
So, thank you for the presentation. Oh. Councilmember Thompson.
Go.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go for it.
It's because I'm so hard to notice. I know. The, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Just first off to everybody, thank you for bringing it back and letting us have this conversation. I really appreciate kind of just the ability to talk about where we're all coming from on this. Just a couple of questions. So, some of the immediate needs like in human services. You know, as I understand it, we're essentially allocating this money into a bucket for a whole bunch of possible things that people could then ask us for. Is that the case? Or like, what's the actual mechanism for figuring out what that gets distributed for?
Well, by giving us this bucket, it will give us the ability to be able to start going forward and having the conversations, looking at finding the community navigators, whether we put out an RFP requesting someone to come help us distribute these funds to the residents or businesses as it is. So, it's really giving us the ability to kind of move forward. Any sort of, you know, contracts that we have will of course be run through council. And so, you know, as I stated earlier, it's not like I'm asking you to give me a million dollars and then you'll never see me again. We will definitely be constantly following up with council and figuring out kind of how we want to best use this money to serve our community, both residents and business. Becky, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'd just like to say that in working with some of our nonprofits already, and we'd already done quite a bit of research during COVID about what some of our human services needs were and tried to kind of identify what some general areas might be that we need to provide assistance through. So, but still a lot of details to work out on that.
Okay. Do you know when we would start distributing funds and actually giving that into the community?
I was waiting to see if Becky was going to speak. So, we would need to really find some of these nonprofits to work with because dispersing this amount of money is honestly not in my wheelhouse. And I acknowledge that we need people who do this for a living to make sure that they are reaching out to the people who truly need it, that they know how to help them with not just one little facet of what they're asking for, but, you know, giving the ability to reach out to many different people. So, I propose that for the utility assistance part of it, I would love for us to be able to start getting that up and running in City Hall until such a time that we can turn it over to someone who's, you know, used to doing this as their business. So, I know that's not a very concrete answer, and I wish I could give you a better one, but it would be as soon as we could actually get the partnerships going with nonprofits to help us distribute funding.
No, it's totally fine. It's the right answer, and the right answer is not always the satisfying answer. The, I see you laughing, Erin. The, which, it looks like we've allocated like five hundred thousand dollars to rehire staff on a limited-term basis, and I assume that's through the end of 2022, or what does that term look like?
Yes, it would be through 2022. Well, at least for that five hundred thousand. We, and Becky, I don't know if you can speak to this or if we would need to phone a friend with Director Bothwell. But when we are talking about funding right now, we are talking about funding just through 2022. And if we were to decide, for example, with the limited-term positions, if council decided that they wanted to extend that limited term through, let's say, 23, 24, still using ARPA funding, that is something that we would come back to council with.
Okay. I mean, have those positions been determined? Is that something that staff would do from here, or is that something that we'd have further conversations about?
I think that would be something that, there has been some. I think, uh, that would be something that there has been some talk about what positions would be reinstated. And Becky, do you have anything to kind of add about?
Yeah, I, I believe we'll actually be talking more about that tonight and in future budget conversations as well.
Okay. I mean, the, the only thing is, you know, we're kind of on the line with the budget as is right now. So adding limited term positions that we haven't talked through, that we know for sure that we want to fund moving forward. Like, I don't want to hire somebody and then a year and a half realize like, oh, perhaps this isn't what we want like to spend our money on. Maybe there should be a different priority. So I feel like we should have that conversation now. I could recommend, uh, spending it on recreation in the Parks Department. We'll talk about that in a little bit, too.
Yeah. And if I could interject too, I think, um, Aurora, I think your position is in that bucket as well. So we really like council approval and support of that one.
Okay, yeah. Perfect. Um, oh, I was gonna say something else, but I didn't write it down. And it's not coming quickly, so I'm gonna press mute.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
Thanks for letting me double dip. I bet the, the conversation has led me to have some more questions. So I wanted to mention two things. Um, North Shore Schools Foundation would be a great vehicle figuring out what the schools need, what the kids need. Um, there's a, there's a fund that I know a little bit about that goes to homeless children. And, uh, so that I would encourage that conversation. And then I had a conversation with the police chief recently where I, um, asked him, I said, I have this sense that we're, there's gonna be a real wave of, um, domestic violence issues coming up. Cause right now it's gone underground a little bit. Um, I said, kids, you know, kids have just gotten back to school. They've, they've not had eyes on them. And I wanted to know what his sense was and he agreed. And so I wonder if it's possible to look into, you know, in our last budget, we, we took the domestic violence advocate down from full-time to halftime. I think it would be wise to consider that we might need her back at full-time. And in addition, I don't know if, to me, it seems that it would make sense that we potentially do some police training on how we deal with domestic violence calls. And, um, the police chief, you can ask him, but, um, he agreed that that was something that he thought was going to be a coming, a coming problem from the pandemic. And so I just would ask that you consider and look into the possibility of those couple of items.
I'll go ahead and write that down. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Thompson.
It'll be really fast. I just remembered the one thing that I wanted to say. Uh, in, in terms of human services funding, I would love if we could find a way to focus on areas that are a need, but perhaps not funded by other levels of government. Just to try to find where the need is the most acute. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in, um, our budget that we saw tonight, there was a police department training. $194,000. I asked, um, what that actually covered because it was, some of that was part of what the legislature required as well. So I kind of wanted to know what was the train, what requirements? And I talked to Clint Beck and he said he'd get back to me with that. So let's look at that first and then see where, where we might want to go from there.
So thank you for the, the presentation. Uh, so I really do like the framework and the thoughtfulness uh, that was presented tonight. Uh, I, I do think that the fourth bucket that doesn't, doesn't have an identified amount yet would be important to continue carrying forward and using in that uh, community outreach and developing what that includes. Because I do think we have the opportunity to do some great things for our infrastructure that can really impact transit that reaches out to some of the most affected people by, uh, COVID. I mean, you see a lot of the buses that, and the transit that are just not used as much right now, um, just by the, the people that can work from home. But the people that are still using it are the ones that are most relying on it. So if we can continue to improve that and make it, uh, safer and easier, I think anything we can do along those lines is, uh, important. Uh, and, and the, I think one of the biggest pieces there was kind of the social worker or the ARPA navigators, uh, cause there's lots of programs that are from different levels, county, state, that there's lots of assistance available, but our Bothell community and residents have a hard time engaging, activating, uh, and reaching those. And so if we can have that staff, those navigators as part of this that can, uh, not only help with the programs that we develop, but reaching some of those other programs that are out there. Cause, uh, there's vastly more money out there than what we're getting in our ARPA funds. So I think that's a, a big benefit. Cause you know, you hear one of the big challenges is just accessing it and, um, being able to use it. Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Sorry, sorry to just jump in here, but you jogged some neurons and I have to toss it out there. Uh, one thing that I have, I have heard is I've been out talking with people and with our police chief is that we are woefully, um, and very needful to have capable social workers uh, who can step in and take care of, uh, city issues, both on a police level and in other areas. So might, and I don't know if you've done, Bothell has a program for social work. I need to do that homework. But might we work on that? Could we use ARPA funds for that pipeline in training social workers? Could we provide grants or scholarships for people who are pursuing that path?
That's a good question and one that I do not have the answer to, but it's something that we can definitely look into.
Okay. All right. That's, that's the sum of my interruption. Thank you.
So Aurora and Becky, did we get you the feedback direction that we need and that you were looking for from this?
Very helpful.
Yes.
Great. Uh, so, so thank you both, uh, and we'll move on to our next item. So we have AB 21 dash 152. So the city council budget proposal study session. And we'll turn that over to our interim city manager, Erin Lenhart.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, so this evening I'm going to be, um, kind of your, uh, masters of, master of ceremonies more than anything else. I'm going to kind of be the traffic cop. Um, you, uh, this, this session is for you. Um, and we've, uh, we've taken in the requests that council had and we've provided you some additional information so that you can have a discussion. So I'm gonna ask Becky to share a presentation to just kind of lay out the, the reason we're here and, and the process as I see it. Thank you, Becky. Cause I can't walk and chew gum at the same time. So I know I can't, I can't be traffic cop and a presenter at the same time. So, uh, the purpose of, uh, just a general overview, I'm gonna tell you about the purpose of tonight's discussion. Um, then we'll go through the council member requests and we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So the purpose, um, is to consider and discuss funding additional needs within the 2021, 2022 budget. Uh, these are requests that came directly from you, uh, the council members. And, uh, what city staff did was they took your request and we, we sort of put a little, little meat on the bones and, um, determined what resources we felt were necessary in order to implement these. Um, and just one general note is that, uh, we have already heard a majority of the city council requesting uh, the inclusion of human services grants in the budget amendment. Uh, so that item isn't before you tonight, but we have already heard that and that will come to you for further discussion in November. So just a few words about process, and this is a very wordy slide. Um, so we're going to, uh, discuss the items in the same order that they appear in the agenda bill. So, um, those forms start on page 43 of the online packet. Um, staff will display a slide with the highlights to help, uh, jog your memory. Um, and help the, the particular sponsor or sponsors for that item, uh, describe it. And then staff will unshare the slide so that you all can see each other for the discussion. Uh, staff will be available for technical questions and questions about, you know, where the resource numbers came from, et cetera. Um, and then, um, items receiving a majority of council support will be incorporated into the proposed mid-biennial budget amendment. All right. So if there are any questions, I'm going to go ahead and kick it off. Uh, the first request is brought to you by, uh, was sponsored by councilmembers Thompson and Doer. And it's to, uh, join the annual or the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. So with that, I will turn it over to the two of you for whichever one wants to discuss it. Councilmember Doer.
Thank you. Um, so I think we've all kind of been at various, um, council meetings and had visitor comments around, uh, K4C. Um, it, it's been something that I've been interested in and for a number of years. And, um, I, I think there's a couple of levels we could take this at. And I, um, I think the majority of King County cities are already a part of, um, the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. And so I, I think at, at the bare minimum, we should be members. And then perhaps going forward, um, and, and in another biennial budget review, talk about, um, what we could actually do in terms of, um, moving, moving forward. But I think at, at the bare minimum, the, the dues are 2,000 plus 1,200. I mean, sustainability is one of our council goals. I don't think that we've done a whole lot around those council goals to push this forward. And I think there are a lot of resources through this, um, organization that would help us maybe prioritize um, ways in which we could, um, you know, do, do something about what we say is important to us. I think after this, after this particular summer with the high heat and, um, looking at Mount Rainier, I don't know about you, but it's, it's very obvious to me that this is, this, this summer was a tipping point. And so I'd like for us to consider, um, actually following up our words with, with an action. I don't know if Councilmember Thompson wants to weigh in, but that's my pitch.
I don't have a better pitch than that. And you've been working on this since well before I was here. So I think it's appropriate that you're the one that gives the pitch. I would just say it's kind of embarrassing that we have climate as a council goal and we're not part of K4C. Um, and I do like the fact that the resources that were put on there. So we kind of know like how to put legs on it down the road. But, but I'd say the same thing. I, I, I think the important thing is just that we join right now and we are part of that. We sign up and say, hey, this is important to us and we're gonna join in with the other cities that say it's important to them.
So Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you. Yeah. Um, I was just curious, once we join, a great opportunity, by the way. Uh, once we join, will allow us to, um, be part of a committee with some of the other cities that are already doing this so that we can gain that knowledge as we're moving forward? Uh, how, how does that, uh, the $2,000, does that mean that we get to be part of this, this group of cities? So, uh, we can engage and have conversation and then maybe be on a committee that can come back and, and tell us, you know, give us updates on where we should, where we should go?
I, I think that's the idea is it's a common resource. Um, and last year they, I believe they put out, um, climate action plans. Um, and so we could access some of those, those climate action plans and, and then determine in our next biennial budget what items we think that we can afford or want to pursue.
Director Cotterman, did you have some additional information to share?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, somewhat in response to Councilmember McNeil, um, this does get us the membership and, and, um, there's a committee of elected officials that meets. There's also a, a group of staff that meet on this. And, uh, so that's what the membership gets you as well as the resources that, uh, that Councilmember Doer referred to. Like any volunteer organization, um, we get out of this what we put into it. And right now we don't have any resources dedicated to work on, on this or to staff this effort. Um, one of the first things that the membership, one of the first things that the, the K4C asks of members is that they develop a, a climate action plan. It's not a requirement, but it's strongly encouraged. And they certainly provide some technical support to do that. I talked with four of the member cities to get a better sense of what all is involved with being a member of K4C. The, the time commitment for the meetings is really not the issue. It's really the amount of effort that goes into developing that climate action plan. Uh, there is a toolkit, as Councilmember Doer referred to, uh, that, that can be used. But all of the cities that I spoke with, uh, also hired a consultant, uh, to, to do that work, to develop that plan. So, and then there's the staff time to manage that consultant. So I'm not trying to be a wet blanket. I just want to make sure that we're realistic about what, what we could do even as members at this point. And I know, speaking for my staff, um, I'd have to shift resources in order to, to put any staff on this.
Deputy Mayor.
Well, how long can we, um, sit at the table? Is K4C tolerant of people who are sitting at the table for a year or two? Um, while they see how the, how it works and how it can fit into their city before they commit budgets? Be up for staffing?
I don't think there's any, there's no requirement. So presumably we could sit at the table as much as we wanted to.
And so, so could we kind of cheat and glean ideas and, and bring them in? And
Oh, absolutely.
Until we could get to the point where we could hire staff for that?
If, if we have someone who can sit at the table, yes.
Okay.
We would have to be there to, to be able to participate in that. There are monthly meetings of the staff group that are a couple hours a month. Then there are also some subgroups that meet. Uh, sometimes they have expectations of members of those subgroups to, to do some work. So again, it's, it's how much we want to put into it is how much we'll get out of it.
Okay. Well, I, I, I would sure support it to initially be sitting at the table. And as my mother would call it, circling and sniffing, just to orient to the program. And then figure out how we can, uh, become more committed into it without it, other things suffering in the process, you know, bringing budget in, um, and accommodating that. If that was, if that was possible with K4C.
I believe it would be possible, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And it, and as, as, uh, we noted in the, um, in the budget request form that's in your packet, this could dovetail very well with the, the work that we're gonna need to do on the comprehensive plan as well. So there's some timing involved in that, but that's something else to, to factor into this. I think that they can, they can work in tandem to, to accomplish some, uh, some of the, the council's goals.
Well, that, that's a good observation and thank you for it.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So, um, I have a little bit of concern. I mean, I think it's really very well. I, I'm very pleased that we are going to take some climate action plan. I think that's important for all of us. But I'd like to know what cities are involved. I'd also like to know what staff is required to actually carry out the action plan. And I mean, when we're going to look at a budget, we need to know, you just can't be a member. You need to know what is our commitment beyond that. And so without those answers, I would hope you could just get more information. And so without those answers, I would hope you could just get more information.
And I can certainly give you some more information, councilmember McAuliffe. I, I believe, like councilmember Dour mentioned, I believe I'm sure the cities in King County are members. I don't know how active all of them are. I identified about eight and I spoke with four of them. So I, I talked to Burien, Kenmore, Shoreline and Redmond. And I know also Isaguat, Tuckwilla, Kirkland and somebody else that I'm forgetting are also members. But the four I spoke to, and I, and I was going to talk to more, but I was getting pretty much the same story from all four of them. That there, it's a very valuable resource. They're all very involved in K-4C. Most of them started out with part-time staff. Someone that may have already been on staff that was assigned to do this and that grew into a larger assignment, particularly in developing that climate action plan. And then they were shifted or additional staff was brought on to actually implement the climate action plan. So that is the next step. And there's a, there's an ongoing need there in order to, to make this successful, to do the monitoring and to continue to be involved in the work that, that K-4C is doing. And they all used outside consultants to help develop that climate action plan. And all of them mentioned that they really did a robust public engagement process as part of that. And so there, a lot of times their initial focus, based on what comes out of the climate action plan, their initial focus may be on what the city can do regarding its, its own operations. And then as they grow the program, it starts to reach out more to other businesses and organizations to get them involved in working on reducing greenhouse gases as well. I should mention the ICLI membership is not a requirement, but all of the cities I spoke with joined ICLI because it's another important resource and they have models that they provide to their member organizations. I think there's some extra cost involved in some of those as well that sets up that local monitoring of greenhouse gases. So you have something to measure your progress against. So that's a, that's a separate organization, but it was a, a resource that was identified by all of the cities that I spoke to.
I guess I just have a concern and maybe you might be able to help me with this is that if we, what, I'm concerned about what the initial, ongoing costs, I would say of staff and of implementation. And when we have a budget that is still in a deficit, I'm concerned about how we meet some of the, some of the needs. If we go into this, we should be committed to doing actions. And if we're going to do some action plans, then we need to know what is, what staff is needed to do that? What other consultants do we need? What, on down the road, what is it going to cost us?
And we've tried to identify those, those costs at least through the next year or so. So the, the proposal that's in your packet identifies if we were to have a staffing increase and the proposal talks about a, an additional senior planner of about a hundred and fifty thousand a year for that, and that would just be for the, the 2022 budget. As if the council defers to make that decision until the 2324 budget, we could look at different staffing models and different costs at that time. But that I think gives a, an initial sense at least. And then to do the, the climate action plan, the range that I heard from the different cities was anywhere from fifty thousand to a hundred and seventy thousand. So we, we put a range in there as well.
Well, I guess while I support this, I would just like to share my concerns with the rest of the council members. We have staff's positions that we let go during COVID and we want to bring some of those back and to, to start something new when we've not identified who we want to bring back as staff people and what, what our needs are. I'm a little concerned about stepping into this. Always next year, when we restore the staff that we need and, and get on a better foothold with our deficit, I would look at this again.
Thank you. Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we, I, I support this. You know, we, we just had a, a record-breaking summer. There is something to climate change. We need to, if we're going to talk the talk, we need to walk the walk. So I'm in, I'm in full support of this.
Mayor Olson. You're on mute.
Yep. Impromptu yellow card. So yeah, so I, I think it's a pretty low bar to become a member and get involved with that, this organization. And you do hear the good information from this. So, so I think it's, it is valuable for us to become involved and start that process. And I, I think, you know, some other council members, you know, have mentioned that have this, continue this conversation on into the next biennium discussion, use it as, as part of the docket planning process, line out the, the staff that needs to be involved. And, and then as Director Cotterman said, you know, use, use this opportunity as the comp plan update. So, so that would be my opinion on this item.
Thank you. So according to my count, councilmembers Thompson and Dour, it looks like you have majority support of this particular item of joining K-4C for 2022 and then having a further discussion in subsequent biennium. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. Are we able to use ARPA funding for a temporary position for this?
I don't believe so. I believe it would have to be a position that was eliminated in the, to be, to qualify for ARPA funding.
Okay. And then is it, so would we actually establish a, a person to be part of the committee to go to these meetings? If we don't have staff, if we become a member? Could we appoint somebody to, to go and as a council member?
There is a, there is a council, there's an elected officials group that meets. I think they meet once a quarter. But there is no reason why an elected official couldn't attend the, the staff group meeting as far as I know.
Great. Okay. I'd love to, love to see one of us sitting at that table. It'd be great.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you for the discussion. All right. So we'll move on to the next request. Believe that was also in, in Director Cotterman's wheelhouse. So councilmember Thompson had a request for an urban three financial analysis. So I will hand it over to you, councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, interim city manager. I was about to say thank you, mayor, but that's not it. You know, if I had a couple bucks for every time I have heard the phrase structural budget deficit over the last couple of years, I might be able to solve our structural budget deficit. You know, we've identified financial stability as a top council goal over the last couple of years. But typically we've only looked at this in one of two ways, cutting expenses and raising taxes. And neither of those, I don't think are the most fun things we do as part of this. You know, we got a presentation from Joe from Urban Three last month that showed us a third way. Basically strategically using land use to try to eliminate that structural part of our structural deficit. You know, when land changes hands, we make money. When property is developed, we also make money. If we do the work to make sure that over the long term, our revenues can at least keep up with our expenses, we're going to leave future councils in a better situation than we've been in, which I think is really important. Because, you know, as Director Bothwell kind of mentioned tonight, like there, there are some large expenses on the horizon coming. And, you know, inflation at six percent over the last year, expenses are going up fast. I would love part of this council's legacy to be that we did more than just patch things together. Like we did more than just put Band-Aids on the budget and try to get to the next biennium. I'd love to start the work to leave those future councils in better shape now. That's my pitch.
Councilmember Dour.
Thanks. I wholeheartedly support this proposal. I think it's a relatively small amount of money and I was really moved by the information presented to us by Joe Minicozzi. The idea of crop yields and property tax makes a lot of sense to me. Again, as, as councilmember Thompson said, it's a third way. It's a way of looking at your land use as a, a source of revenue and using it efficiently. And the way he talked about roads and how we, we call roads assets, but we know they're not. If you were paying any attention at all to that update from Mr. Marakawa, you know that roads are not assets. They are maintenance and preservation nightmares that we build and then are strapped with forever. So I'm, I think it's a great investment and I hope that others will, will see this as a potential solution instead of raising business fees and other taxes. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Okay. So I'm putting Director Catterman on the spot. On a scale of one to 10, how much would you like to add this in your toolbox?
Well, I would have to agree that you're really putting me on the spot with that one. Can I wait and see how many councilmembers are in favor?
Regardless.
I'm listening, Director Cotterman.
I won't give you an exact number because I don't know what I'm comparing it to, but I would say it's in the high, it's in the high numbers. It'd certainly be a very useful tool. And, and looking at the proposal, there's a couple of things in there that I think would be very beneficial for us. One is they're, they're talking about identifying areas of the city where they would do a little bit more in-depth analysis of what, what sort of land use scenarios we might look at. And that would work very well with the comprehensive plan as we go through that update process and see where we might want to do some upzones for, not just for capacity, but look at it in terms of, you know, what would be the, the potential financial benefits to the city as well. The other thing I would note about it, and, and this may be where I kind of don't put it up at the very top of the, the scale of 10, is I think a lot of the assumptions of this, a particular approach going into it are based on what most other states do. It doesn't really factor in everything that we're already doing under growth management. So we don't have the debate here about, you know, where, whether we're going to grow our, our urban area or whether we're going to, you know, have a lot of big box retail. I think we've already had that discussion and made some policy choices there. So from that standpoint, I'm not sure it gives us as much information as it might for another type of jurisdiction. But I think that the information will be very useful. And I think it will be a very helpful tool for us as we, certainly as we work on the comprehensive plan and, and for the council as you make some decisions. As a former boss of mine, former city administrator I worked for always told the council, basically you have two roles, budget and land use. Those are your main policy areas. So these, this marries the two of those, I think, very well.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. And I, I had a similar reaction that, you know, we've, we've been under the Growth Management Act guiding us quite a bit. However, if this were to look stem to stern and baffle and give us some insights, like I look at the 160th street exit off of 405 and I look, so much potential for workforce housing. I'm, I'm not, you know, with the bridge and the park and ride. There's a lot of potential to put in, in those quadrants that sit around that interchange. A lot of use that it could shoulder in burden. And I don't really recall in the years, I, I really hearing much discussion on that. So if this tool did that and looked at things, you know, stem to stern and baffle, I, I would appreciate hearing what they observe.
We had a, a presentation, I guess it was last week now, that they've been, Urban Three has been doing some similar work for Snohomish County, the HASCO and AHOP, the housing groups up there. And we got a brief presentation last week on some preliminary work, some preliminary findings. And they've, and they're looking at the entire county. And one of the things that, that I thought was helpful was how they're looking at, I'm not describing this very well. They identify those areas where there's a lot of potential. And, and they can also then do some different scenarios. So it's really looking at GMA, the, the principles of GMA through an economic lens, which is something we typically don't do. It's really making the economic argument for a lot of the, the GMA principles, in my opinion.
Well, that, that's good to hear and I'm sold. So thank you.
And I managed not to give you a number.
Councilmember McNeil.
That was awesome, Director. No number. Yeah, I, just kind of listening to you talk and, and hearing the conversation around the Growth Management Act and how we look at it here, having a regional growth center in the north end of our city, Snohomish County, working with this group already, Urban Three. I, I think there's nothing but a positive benefit for us to have more information looking forward. I like the comments that councilmember Thompson brought up about ensuring that we're looking forward for future councils. Being fiscal responsible doesn't mean doing it right just now. It means looking into the future. So I, I definitely would be supportive of this. I am curious, however, there's a, a comment at the bottom about additional costs. So this says fifty, sixty thousand. So would we, if we do this, are we going to be looking at additional costs beyond this? And or when would we, when would we know that?
There would likely be additional costs beyond that. The fifty to sixty thousand is really for their, their initial proposal to do the work. There would have to be some, I would assume some type of maintenance of the model that they would provide. So I, I don't have a good sense at this point how much additional cost there would be. I'm not saying that we'd have to add a whole nother staff person or anything like that, but there would be additional workload ongoing and not just in community development, but I think also in finance and probably our IS division, our GIS group. So there, I, I don't have a good answer for you at this point, but that's one of the things that we want to take a look at once we get the, the results of that work and just see what we need to do going forward.
So member Agnew.
Well, after Director Cotterman's response to the deputy mayor's question, how could you not support it?
Thank you. Anyone else like to weigh in? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And I think it's a good tool and I do support.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Olson.
Yeah, I agree. There seems to be multiple interactions. The Snohomish County right now using it, our comp plan coming up. I, I think it, it is a good one-time expenditure. And then something to determine what the ongoing requirements would be. But, but as far as this one-time expense, I think it's, it's a good one.
Thank you. So we have majority support for that. So I don't know if you noticed on the slide or in the packet that staff proposed either using Block D proceeds or general fund for this. Are there any preferences? Block D proceeds, thumbs up, thumbs down? General fund?
I mean, don't Block D proceeds go into the general fund if they're not used?
True. So, so it looked like general fund was the, was, was the one that carried. So thank you very much. All right. Moving along. So the next request comes from, sponsored by councilmember Agnew. And I believe we will have both, I think we will have the fire chief here available to us. Hopefully there he is to answer any questions. So I will turn it over to you, councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, this is all about that extractor. You know, as, as I stated earlier, about nine to 10 of our firefighters have had cancer in the last 10, 15 years. And, and a couple of them have died. And, you know, one of the leading causes of that is them getting particulates on their bunker gear and wearing it again and then breathing in those particulates. Because when you're sweating in your bunker gear, you draw in about eighty, ninety percent more. you draw in about 80, 90% more ions from the outside. So it was eliminated from 45, and we I talked to the deputy city manager, interim city manager, and we we talked about this and putting it on this. It it's a requirement as far as I'm concerned. I mean, let's try to keep them as safe as possible. You know, the the job's hard enough as it is. Be happy to take any questions or let you ask the chief if he has any questions.
Deputy Mayor.
A question is just a comment. I was talking to a firefighter not long ago, and they were telling me they used to enjoy the smell of of a fire coming in. Yeah, yeah, you know, the a fire that had been fought and coming into the station and enjoying that smell and realizing now that it's poison to breathe. So this is a no-brainer on this extractor for me. And the fact that a station would have to share one, the the mom in me wants to have several so you can have them all going at the same time and not have anything sitting out. But getting one in the station would be good. So it's got my support.
Thank you. I think I saw Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Yes, I I too, I had an opportunity to go to Fire Ops and 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 live and breathe what the fire department goes through, our first responders, and I can tell you that anything that we can do to protect their health and well-being while they're protecting and serving us and helping us and being there for us, I think, is is critically important. And I want to thank Councilmember Agnew for staying steady on this, because this is something that we have talked about. I think we've talked about it in past budgets and things like that. But ensuring that that we're supporting our department, I think, is critically important. And and Chief, yes, firsthand, I did get pushed through that that building over at Fire Ops, and I'll tell you, I have a much bigger respect for what you guys do. So thank you.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And I, in visiting the fire department, so I want to say that I did see the need for this. I'm glad to have it pushed forward. The sooner we can do it, the better. And I do support doing Block D proceeds for it as well.
Thank you. Mayor Olson.
Yeah, this seems like one of the opportunities that we get to do something right initially. It'll always be cheaper to do it now during the initial construction than trying to add it in improperly or some kind of just add on in the future. So having it being able to get designed and integrated at the same time as the construction, I I think, really pushes this into immediate need. And so, yeah, I would agree with just using the Block D funds for this one.
Councilmember Thompson.
As the son of a retired firefighter with cancer, I'm going to vote yes on this. And plus, it's a lot cheaper than the last ask we had from Fire, so it seems super easy.
Councilmember Doer.
I thought you were just going to stop after four, but apparently we're going to have a love fest.
Yes, absolutely. I am one of those firefighters who died from cancer, delivered, helped deliver my daughter.
Thank you. So have majority support on that one, easy. All right, next is also sponsored by Councilmember Agnew. And let's see, next slide, Becky. Thank you. I will turn it over to him, and both Finance Director Bothwell, as well as the fire chief, are here to help answer questions on this one.
So I brought this up because basically we got a couple of aid cars. Our newest aid car, we bought surplus from North Shore. And and it's seen some better days. And we have an aid car out there that that doesn't have air conditioning that works. And I I know it's not an issue in the wintertime, but it it's going to be an issue in the summertime. Right now, I don't know if we ordered it today, how quick it would get here. A lot of lot of departments are ordering them, and some of them are getting a little late. But we're in dire need of an aid car. And it's already in an existing asset replacement fund, so we're just, it it's not going to be a huge financial impact on us. And with that, I'll leave it to the chief.
Yeah, I could just chip in and thank you, Councilmember Agnew, Council. So we do, we have two two aid cars. It's the North Shore one is actually 21 years old. We bought it, used it reasonably low miles, but they're, it's just old, it's wearing out. And the other aid car is aid 142 at the downtown station, and we drive the dog off that thing. We've started to rotate aid cars to help out, but it's got 123,000 miles on it, 11 years old, which doesn't sound bad next to your sedan at home, but on an aid car, that's a lot of miles. They're heavy. They 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 get a lot of hard use. You know, we do the best we can, but we're trying to get to emergency scenes. So both these aid cars actually, this year, were out of service quite a bit. We had several days this year where we only had two aid cars available in the city. And so we ran with the engine only at Station 44 for a while. That's our slowest station. So it is an impact on us, and we would like to try to get this this aid car in the the next budget to help us through that. We've got one aid car coming in the fleet now. And actually, District 10 is interested in ordering an aid car, which will really help us out, because like I said, we've had two down at one time for periods of time interrupting our levels of service. So if we can get that aid car in the hopper, it's probably about an 18-month or more lead time right now on those things. So the sooner we can get get approval for that, the sooner we can get it. We probably won't get it till the end of '22 at this point, anyway.
Councilmember Doer.
Ask a question. So are we replacing, this would be replacing two at the same time instead of replacing the second one in two years? I'm just needing clarification.
Yes, I believe we have in Finance Director Bothwell can help me. We had, we had permission to replace one already in '22. And so we're asking for a replace a second one as well in '22 to move up that schedule.
Does that get us any sort of financial, like, you know, if you order more than one, do you, does it help?
Absolutely, absolutely. And if District 10 actually puts in for one, we will essentially be ordering three at one time, which should give us another break. I don't know the dollar figure, but I I'm guessing it's about 1,500 bucks or more per unit. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it all adds up. It's equipment we can put on there. And we'll do, we'll do the best we can with the vendor brought on that.
Okay, well, if we're going to save money and we're going to spend it anyway eventually, I'm a yes.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Just ditto what Councilmember Doer just said. If we're going to save save money and we're going to spend it anyway on something that we really need, do that. And then the other push point for me is is that I'm assuming aid cars are like what I'm hearing on new cars as well, is that trying to get new vehicles, there's a waitlist for it. So really, you're not really asking for something early, except to get the ball rolling so that we can have that when we anticipate on when we need it.
Correct. There's actually, there's a chance, I'm sorry, there's a chance we might even get one of them till '23. You know, if that lead time is that far out, we're hoping they can get the production cycle up and get it earlier. But the late, the earliest we could be is late '22 at this point.
I I support this coming out of the asset replacement funds, or if need be, Lot D. But but we need to be, I see the, I see the aid cars come in and out frequently. So when you say they get a lot of use, I know that from my own personal observation.
Thank you. So that was three. Mayor Olson.
So I have a question. It's, so it's in what was flashed up on the screen was saying that it would be coming out of the big thing at replacement funds. So does that push something else a little further out? Kind of is it reordering how or when we're replacing things?
Director Bothwell, can you answer that question, please?
Yeah, it doesn't. We, it's routine to kind of shift things around and add a little extra money to some things and pull things out of service a couple of years early and stuff like that. That's kind of a routine adjustment. So we'll, we'll fix it in the next budget when we go in and and update the replacement schedule. But it it's not going to compromise the time that we put something else into service.
Yeah, I mean, if it if it's not having a a negative impact, then I I think eliminating those downtimes in the impact that we have to service is definitely a benefit to us. So and, you know, as everyone keeps saying, it's, it's a long wait time. So let's get it ordered, get in in line now.
Thank you. So to Councilmember Doer's point, I think we have the majority, so we can move on to the next one.
I just want to thank all the council for that, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is sponsored by Councilmember McCullough. And I believe we will have Parks and Rec Director Stroop here to join us. He's here now to help answer questions. So I will turn it over to you, Councilmember McCullough. You're currently muted.
Okay, I think what's really important to consider here is that there are no funds available to continue the development of the Park at Bothell Landing. We need to find some dollars in order to bring in, let's see, someone to, let's see, the Prose Plan asks that we bring in someone to identify this park as a long-term project. In order to do that, we need a consultant to come in and begin that work. It's about $250,000 for the consultant services in 2022 to present this process. Now, we have for many years had a plan on the book, on the books, to develop the Park at Bothell Landing. I would tell you right now, it needs even to be upgraded as it is. We need to have a gathering place for people to do a concert. We need to re- re- look at those restrooms and decide, does that really meet capacity? We also would have an opportunity for, in the Prose Plan, people asked, a large percentage of people asked to identify the park as a long-term funding source that needs development. They would like to see play areas, splash pad, improved water access to the river, covered seating, shade specters, improved pathways and lighting, as well as ADA accessible park amenities. This park is the very entrance to our city. And right now, it just doesn't look like it's anything that we want to say, here's our entrance to the city. Even with the dog park, I would say that's a great space for it because it doesn't bother any neighborhoods, but at least we could make it look nice for the time that we have it, and then take down whatever we have. The fences at least could be a nice entry away into the city. So I think this is critically important that we invest in in that very park that is entrance to the city. There were great plans for this years ago, and nobody's ever moved forward. And I'm going to let Nick talk to that after this, after I say that. And funding source would be Block D proceeds one time. Let's get it going.
Well, thank you, Councilmember McCullough. I I do understand that this this plan has been sitting out there for a long time. I do want to note that, however, that we have done a couple of the elements of the plan, and most notably, the the bridge replacement. Back in 2010, that was one of the zones that was identified. And, you know, looking at it, it was identified as about a $500,000 expenditure. But again, as as we heard earlier tonight from Steve Marakawa, the the ultimate cost of that project was about $2.8 million. So really, when we think about, you know, this this great opportunity, I know that we we talk about master planning, and I know that that's not something that is is very exciting for a lot of people, but it really is the critical path forward for us to be eligible for the grants that we're going to need to build this project. And and so in developing that cost, I reached out to our our project managers, to our engineers, to our capital side, and looked at what would that take for us to, you know, go ahead and get us to attend, you know, open back up the master plan, do the community engagement that we need to do to understand exactly what people want to see, and then get us to about a 10% design, which positions us really well for that conversation that's coming next year about the capital facilities plan and positions us really well for the opportunity to go after grants.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, first off, I'm going to apologize for what I'm about to say, because you both had really good thoughts. But I got to tell you internally, I'm like, enough already. Yes, I support this. Yes, we need to get this ball moving forward, because the people of Bothell, I hate to use the phrase deserve, but the people of Bothell really deserve this park. And they've been patient for a very, very, very long time. And if we can take Lot D proceeds and get this moving, let's get it moving. And not to, not to put the cart before the horse and make your your job harder, Nick. Planning is good, but I'm ready to go down and start shoveling the dirt for the splash pad myself. And you're right, we need to plan. So let's do what we need to do, and let's get this going.
Councilmember Doer.
I have reservations about this. I've been on council long enough to have seen many a master plan be paid for and not have follow-through. And I don't see how this would be any different. I mean, last time, I remember in visitor comment, I, gosh, I think it was like 2013, it looked like Disneyland. How do we, how do we continually get Disneyland when we can't afford Disneyland? And so I I'm not going to support this at this time until we have a better plan for how to actually follow through. I've just, we've done the Norway Hill Park master plan. We've done so many master plans that don't, don't actually happen. I would love nothing more than to have a really beautiful park here. As Rosemary said, or Councilmember McCullough said, it is the gateway to our city. But I want to, I want to understand what the plan is for actually building it before I invest more money in another plan. Sorry.
Councilmember Thompson.
I echo a lot of Councilmember Doer's thoughts. I mean, I desperately want something on Bothell Landing that looks like we did it on purpose. It just doesn't look like, well, I'm not going to say that. But it's really hard for me to spend money on a master plan, because that's not going to accomplish that. And we've seen that happen over and over again. I would love to have a process where we figure out what we could actually do in that park with $250,000, like rather than do a plan. As an example, like, I think it would be a great park for a pump track in a skate park right in the middle of our city. And I think we're going to talk about that in a little bit. I would much rather spend that money on actually doing something than another plan.
Councilmember Agnew.
I've been here since the inception of that master plan that looked like a little Disney world. But if we can do something, if we can start the process, start the ballgame rolling, maybe we can get some other investors to help us out with other things in the future. So I'd be, I'm in support of this.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. I had a a couple of questions about the funding, source of funding from Block, Block D proceeds versus park impact fees. So are we able to use park impact fees on this?
You know, I would, I would let Chris speak to this, but I believe that it would be eligible for that, given that both of these would be adding capacity. given that both of these would be adding capacity. Both of these projects, we're looking at the inclusive playground zone as well as that, that public gathering space, which are both zones that were included in the original master plan. So when we talk about master planning, I'm not talking about starting over. What we're talking about is opening that back up. And if there are other things that the community would like to see or would like to change from the original plan, that's the appropriate way to do that. And then again, it positions us well for future funding.
Yeah, so my, my thoughts around it, if we could use park impact fees, I think that'd be amazing. Would the, the Block D building, would those, would that facility be paying? Would that construction be paying park impact fees?
Yes, the, the private development that purchased Block D.
Um, and so that would be, to me, that would be an exciting opportunity for development to pay for parks and open space, potentially with park impact fees. Also, the proceeds from that, the sale of that property would also be a way to create that park and open space. It's actually right adjacent to the property. So I, I definitely think that we want to ensure that we're not going backwards and spending money on things that were done in the past. But Nick, I think you're, you're, I'm sorry, Director Stu, I think your last comment about looking inclusively and looking, looking at it with today's community and, and how we kind of envision it with how we've changed over the past few years since the inception of that master plan originally. I think it might give it, give way to our community to be able to have a voice today in that process. And so I think if there's a way for us to, to use those park impact fees and/or proceeds from, from Block D both, and/or one or the other, I think that to me says that development is to help establish when you first come into Bothell, what you see. I, I think that to me feels really good. It gives me a sense that that cell of Block D is actually, while we may have lost an opportunity on that lot, we're creating an opportunity across the street, so.
Thank you. So I've heard a majority support of this item as well. Okay, so I think we will move on to the next one. Also will be Director Stroop and sponsored by Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And I think that, and I, I leave that to Director Stu to really answer this question. But I believe that the dog park is best sighted at the landing as well as the skateboard park. Now, whether there is room for both and other amenities, I'm not sure. But I think that that, when I look at all the analysis of all the different parks, it's either Glythe Park or the Park at Bothell Landing for both permanent dog park or for skateboard park. I just think what's important is to realize this. Our young people need to be valued. They need to have a place to go. I look at other cities like Kenmore, and I'm putting these both together, sorry. I'm, I'm looking at, let's go back to the permanent dog park. Sorry, I got carried away. All right, so all of our apartments that are in the city, they all have dogs that they want to bring down to the park. They want to meet other people. It's a socialized event. And if you look at the Prose Plan, it's very highly regarded. I don't know that we have to have it open all year round. I think, I look right down there at the Park at Bothell Landing right now, and the grass is all green again. It's growing. But if we had a really nice entry or fence or whatever, or maybe another location, I think it's critically important that we serve our apartment residents and people who want to just get out and socialize. So that's, I'm not sure where it should go. I just think it's important. And I think that the Capital Facilities Plan might be the place to get the funding source.
Thank you, Councilmember. So yes, the staff recommendation is that council have a conversation about if this is a priority for discussion during next year's Capital Facilities Plan process. And I'm sorry, there you go. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
In a word, yes. It is, uh, it, I don't know how many of you have dogs and have hung out. I know one of you has a dog and is hung out at the dog park, Mr. Mayor. But it is, it is a, it is a community event daily for both two-legged and four-legged critters. The dogs get to know each other and they play, they form their little play packs. And people, uh, the community gets to know each other and they're talking and talking about life and their dogs. And it's a, it, it's a necessity. So, and I know Director Stroop has put a lot of thought over several years here on a dog park. So we're not going into this cold. So definitely put this on the Prose Plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Ragnew.
Well, I have a dog. She doesn't like the dog park much though because she runs around on a leash naturally at the old Wayne Golf Course. Took her in there once and she just sniffed at it and went, hmm, not for me. But I'm definitely in support of this.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, I definitely support the staff recommendation, which I think is what's on the table, right?
Correct.
Perfect.
Great, excellent. So majority support for seeing a permanent dog park as a priority in the next CFP process. Excellent. Okay, moving along. Also sponsored by Councilmember McCullough, this is the skateboard park and, and/or pump track. And this has a similar or the same staff recommendation that council will discuss if you would like to see this as a priority going into the next CFP process.
And so, thank you. And I'm sorry, I got, got carried away with both of these at the same time. But the skateboard park is for our young people. It's a place for them to gather. It's a place for them to really enjoy outdoor activity. That's, that's very special. The pump track also is for bicycles and other forms of recreation. We don't have a lot that we offer our teenagers in this town. And I will tell you, if we put this on the Capital Facilities Plan, I think I can get my Minimans who took out our skateboard park to help us support this. And you know, every other city has one. Kenmore has it. Woodville has it. Redmond has it. And the kids love to gather. They just want a place to go. And we don't have that in Bothell. So I'm hoping you'll support this.
Thank you. Lots of cards. Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Councilmember McCullough for bringing this forward. On council, maybe three years ago, we had quite a few young people come and speak to us about a skateboard park. And, and I, I think it would go over really well. I agree with you that they don't, this age group doesn't have a lot to do. I don't personally have skateboarders in my family, but I, I see them out all the time. And I would love to support having a skate park. I don't know the difference between a pump track and a skate park, but some variation of those, I think, would be wonderful.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
I mean, I think I put a skate park in my voter pamphlet statement a couple of years ago. So like, I'm going to go with yes. The, and a pump track, I mean, would be an incredible amenity for Bothell. Councilmember Dorr, a pump track is basically like a short course bicycle course. And then a skate track is for, skate park is for, obviously, skateboards. One cool thing about a pump track is that a pump track can also accommodate skateboarders. You know, it's not going to get the big tricks and it's not going to be, you know, what the, the more advanced skateboarders would want, but it's absolutely a place that kids can gather and ride their skateboard, ride their BMX bike, or just hang out. I know Director Stroop, Leavenworth, put one in a few years ago where you're from. And they hosted a national event not too many years after that and brought a lot of people, brought a lot of money into the city. So, you know, depending on, you know, what we, way we go with this, there's, there's opportunity for this to be part of economic development as well. And question, Director Stroop, is there room in the gravel lot on the Red Brick Road Park for a pump track? Do you know?
You know, we'd have to take a look at it. I, you know, there's a lot of things that go on in there. So there's an access point for the utilities. So Seattle Public Utilities has a pipeline, transmission line that goes through there. It's something that we could take a look at and get back to you with. I think the siding of it really is the, the challenge that we have, similar to the other items. You know, trying to find that space where the land is not restricted, that you could put it in, that maybe is not in the dead center of a neighborhood, that, that is truly our challenge. There's no question that there's support for it in the community. And I think, you know, we even saw skateboarding come back to the Olympics, which was huge this year. And it was actually a ton of fun to watch if you had that opportunity. You're right, I am from a town that, that put in a pump track and a skate park at the same time. And those coexist very well together, and it's extremely popular. I'm also a former skateboarder, so I, I really have a desire to see one of these come back to us. When we, when we lost our skate park back in 2012, that was a hit for the community. And I, I think that there, you know, there's, there's a good number of teens that would really love to see something like that. And not only teens, but also parents and also the little ones too. You'd be amazed how early some of these kids start on, on skateboarding and BMXing.
One really cool synergy that I think a skate park and pump track have with that lot on Red Brick Road, if there's room, is that obviously parking is a challenge there because we can't pave the park. But the cool thing about people that are on bikes or skateboards is they have wheels with them. Like it's not difficult to park downtown and ride a bike on the trail in there. It doesn't take much time at all. So I think it, it would also present a really good access point for an area that's challenged in terms of that access point with the way that, that we all get around. And, and my, my last kind of pitch here is there's also a ton of synergy with mountain bike trails. You know, people will go to the pump track. They can ride mountain bike trails. And that's one of the only uses that we can actually do on the Wayne property that's right there. And for a not enormous amount of money, we could create something that was a really cool asset for our community where people can ride bikes, kids can play outside. You, you know, you could take your kid to learn to ride there and not have to worry about them falling on concrete. It's a place kids can go after school. They can get exercise. I, I think this, the pump track skate park has a ton of synergy with the other opportunities that we could have as well. And Director Stroop, you've been hearing me talk about mountain bike trails at Wayne longer than most people have here. But it, it seems like this really lines up with what we want to do well. And it does provide kids a place to go play outside, which I am all for.
So just a, a point of clarification. So on the former Wayne Golf Course, most of that is designated as passive recreation, meaning that whatever we build, we certainly can build a mountain bike trail, but it has to be a multi-use trail. By that, I mean, it has to include, you know, pedestrians, you know, it could even include people on horses, things like that. But it, it has to be multi-use. So the, the, the way that we proper, or that we purchased that, and if you look at the conservation easements and the language that's in there, it would not allow for a high-intensity sort of mountain bike park with structures or anything. But it certainly allows for multi-use trails.
When, when I say mountain bike trails, that's what I mean. Some dirt trails. People can walk on them too. Walking's cool.
Thank you. Councilmember Ragnew.
Yeah, I definitely be supportive of this. I like Councilmember Thompson's idea of putting it around there. But if I'm not mistaken, there's five acres in that parking lot that we can do almost anything we want to with it.
There's, there's actually four acres of active use right there. But yes, it's that parking lot where the former clubhouse sits. That's certainly active space and it, and the intent was to build something that, you know, potentially could help pay for the operation of the, the park, the maintenance and operations of that. But that is entirely up to the council as to what they would like to, to do with that because it is unencumbered land. We don't, we, we can do what we wish with it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Real fast, I was sitting here thinking, 400 acres in that phrase, water, water everywhere and not a drop to drink. But, you know, that we've got valuable parkland that we can't, can't throw our trees under the bus for, for a park, how, or a skateboard park. However, looking for one is a, is a must. I have to tell you that I had a conversation with someone who is an adult, who was jazzed about a pump track. So teens are going to have to share just a little bit. There might be one here as well. So, yeah, I, full support on both of these. And yes, I understand there's a challenge and yes, I'll be patient as we figure out how we make that happen.
All right. Looks like majority support for that. Thank you all very much for the conversation. I think our next one is sponsored by Councilmember McNeil, also in Director Stroop's wheelhouse. And I will turn it over to you, Councilmember.
Thank you. And first and foremost, thank you, Director Stroop, for your very robust response to all of the questions that I had today. Very thorough, very thoughtful. And now I have a, a vast understanding of how important those fields are to our community and actually to our region. I, I just, I want to just go back. We've been talking about these fields for quite some time, ever since I've been on council. Before I was on council, we've talked about the need to have fields within our community. And having these fields gives us the opportunity to get kids out and recreate, be active, allows them to be social with, with one another, and especially during the pandemic. I was amazed to see the amount of use that we've had so far this year, was, I think it was like 6,500 hours so far, something like that, that we've had this year alone. And we're not even done with 2020 yet. So just having that opportunity for not only our young people, but for adult leagues is, is amazing. And just to share a little bit, you know, 90-plus adult leagues, I think you shared with us today, Director Stroop, 20-plus youth programs, including school programs, faith-based programs, camps. You know, 100,000 people visiting our fields a year in that area. I mean, that's just amazing. What, what does that do for our lodging tax, right? So it's really helping with, you know, bringing people within our community, hopefully having tournaments and games and spending those dollars back into our community. So it's not just a matter of having kids out playing or adult players out playing. It's, it's doing a lot more economically for our community than just playing games and servicing so many different sports. One of the things that Councilmember Dorr brought up that resonated with me about these fields is the, the health and safety portion of it. And she, she brought that up recently here about the crumb, crumb rubber. And I did a little research on it and I, and I, and I think that for a coach, somebody who's out coaching kids on a regular basis and observing not only young, young boys, but young girls out on these fields, I think it's important that we, we make sure that our fields are safe for the health and wellbeing of our, our community and those who are playing on our community fields. I think we have an opportunity here to actually create something from the recommended action, which is, I think, recommended cost estimate one-time fee coming from the proceeds of Block D. I, I didn't really think about the, the proceeds coming from Block D until this was kind of presented as a proposed funding source. But I will tell you that it, it also resonates, I think I spoke a little earlier about the, the Park at Bothell Landing and how Block D, you know, using proceeds from that can help with that, that piece, that park. I think it also can, can help and show that while we have something that we've sold and we didn't get everything that we wanted, we can do and have a major impact on another part of our community. And I hope that, you know, council will support this. I know all of you have talked about supporting this. I hope we will all stand united on this. We've heard from many members of our community how important this is for them to be able to be out and be active, to have their kids out and be active. I, I hope we will, we will find and take this opportunity now and also find ways to create these same opportunities in the north end of our city.
Thank you. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And I want to just say thank you for bringing this before us. We all know how important these fields are going to be to our young people, to our adults, and to our, everyone who wants to gather, play sports, and enjoy being to and to our, everyone who wants to gather, play sports and enjoy being together, even the people who just watch the sport. And if we didn't have this opportunity to replace those fields, they would be gone. So thank you, Councilmember McNeil, for bringing this before us. I totally support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Agnew.
I definitely support it. Thank you for bringing it up, James.
Councilmember Dour.
Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. I think you know how I feel about the sports fields. We have a little bit in common on why we need to get this done. And I'm, I especially am excited that we'll be replacing the, the fill with something that's, um, not going to not only harm our, our, um, children potentially, but also salmon. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we've made it to four, but I've seen other cards. Do the rest of you want to speak? Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I didn't need to speak. Uh, thumbs up on it. Let's do this.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can't vote against this, but, um, I do have a question. Um, on there, it basically said, um, that we perform annual safety testing and it's, uh, continuing to harden, which will eventually lead to exceeding the acceptable safety standards. Um, is there a way we could take this money, set it aside for a replacement? Once this does not meet safety standards, like basically can we, can we get everything we possibly can out of the fields that are there before we spend the money? And I mean, earmark it now, like, set it aside, so it's there, pay for it. Um, i- is that even a possibility or is that like next year that's gonna happen?
Well, I mean, it's a great question, Councilmember Thompson. Um, you know, one of the concerns I have, and, and we brought this before the council, the last two bienniums, um, is that exactly that, the fields have actually gone above and beyond their life cycle. So while we're not at that just ultimate number where we would really have to have that discussion about shutting the fields down, we're inching closer and closer every single day that we're, we're, we're open for business. Um, I have some real concerns about that. Uh, you know, when we look at that and we look at the hardening of a field, we start to look at, you know, concussions, we start to look at leg injuries. We, it's that impact of, you know, playing all these sports out there, and that's what we measure when we go out and test these fields. We actually use a what we call a falling deflectometer, which basically drops a weight down onto the field and it measures the impact of that weight to simulate what a body would be when it hits that field. It's really important that, that we, you know, do find a way to, um, fund the replacement of these fields, you know, long-term. All of these fields are on our asset replacement fund or they're in our asset replacement fund. But as all of you know, that's been a challenge to fund when it comes to facilities. We've done a very good job with the vehicles, but we haven't quite figured out all the facilities and equipment, you know, things like playgrounds, things like our ball fields. This isn't a, a great opportunity to, as we switch these out, to look at, um, you know, the, the infill and what our opportunities are there. We, we know of a couple, um, different, you know, fields that are out there right now. We have the cork fields that, uh, the North Shore School District is using. We have a little bit of concern about those and it mostly has to do with the cork tends to float, it's light. So during heavy rain events, you end up with, um, some issues there. But we are looking at one product in particular that's interesting to us, and it's ground up olive pits. And that sounds a little bit weird, but it's, uh, it's an organic, um, you know, material that's widely available all throughout the, the world. And, um, one of the really cool properties about it is it's about half the cost of cork. And it actually reduces the, the, the heat on the field by about twenty degrees on average. And when you look at an artificial turf field, particularly with crumb, crumb rubber, heat becomes a huge issue. This summer, it's, it was almost unbearable. I mean, you had ambient temperatures over a hundred degrees some of the days this summer out on our fields, which it just doesn't work when you're out there trying to, to do sports. So a lot of opportunities here. Um, I, I don't think waiting is a, is, would be my recommendation. Certainly you could look at doing something like that, but my recommendation would be to move forward as quick as possible to replace both of these fields.
I mean, how are you gonna argue with that, right? No, that's, that's exactly the answer that I just, um, that's what I wanted to know. So, yeah, I'll be, I'll be supporting this. Um, and I'm super excited to hear about the olive pits. Um, if you tell me, if you tell me they last like twice as long, like, I'll just sit over here and swoon about olive pits.
Uh, what, one thing about the organic infills that I, I really, I'm just gonna add real quick. Um, because it's an organic infill, you actually have to put a pad underneath the fields. That is different from the crumb rubber. Crumb rubber acts as that sort of impact attenuator. But with the organics, you actually need to put a pad underneath the fields. The good news on that pad is, is that it typically lasts about twenty-five years, meaning that you'll get through at least two cycles of replacement before you have to replace the pad. So those costs that we're seeing today, they'll be cheaper, you know, the next time we go to replace the fields, hopefully, assuming costs don't rise that much.
I love it. Is there anything else that you want to tell me about this, Nick?
No, no, there's not.
Or should you go to the interim city manager's house later and explain that all to her?
Heard it, I've heard it. Thank you both. Uh, Mayor Olson.
Yeah, what more can be said after, after that? Um, but yeah, I, I think, you know, just one of the items that we keep talking about is just asset replacement, and these are definitely assets, uh, for our city. Um, I think Councilmember McNeil really spoke about how much it's used, how much it's loved. And so, uh, you know, we're talking about roads being assets, you know, with air quotes and everything, but these are definitely assets. Uh, and so taking care of those and, uh, making sure that they're in service and up to, up to par is really what it's about. So, yeah. So this is a good one.
All right. Overwhelming support for that one. Okay, uh, next, it's continues to be the Director Stroop Show, um, sponsored by councilmembers Dour and Thompson. Hand it over to one of you, whoever wants to take it. Councilmember Dour.
Thank you. So we've all, um, we've talked about this during council conversations. Um, and I know, um, Councilmember McCullough and I tried, um, she harder than I, uh, a couple of years ago to, to get something going. The basic idea is, um, rather than a farmer's market, like every other community seems to do, to have, have a, a night market. Um, and my inspiration is from, um, traveling in Asia where every city has their own, um, night market. And that was the single biggest hit with my children when we went to Asia. They didn't care about parks, they didn't care about anything. They just wanted to know, where's the night market and when are we going? Um, so the idea is, I think it would be an economic driver. Um, I've tried, um, Councilmember Thompson and I have talked about ways to kind of, maybe make it start smaller and more, um, not more doable and less strain on staff. But the basic idea would be to have a Friday night market, um, that we would incorporate with, um, the, um, music in the park. We'd move the music in the park to the City Hall Plaza. Um, and then we incorporated the idea of, um, Councilmember McNeil's to bring food trucks in. Um, one more thing that we thought would be super fun to do would be to have it around cultural themes. So, um, and then bring in our boards and commissions to also participate. So for instance, you know, we might have, um, a uh, Southeast Asian, um, cultural night where we have food trucks that are, have the same theme, uh, as, um, the music and maybe have the Arts Commission, um, come up with some sort of, um, activity for, for people to do, like drawing mandalas or something like that. And maybe in some way we could get every, um, every boarding commission involved in some way so that we're all kind of rowing in the same direction and we're creating community, not just with the market, but with the, the boards and commissions who volunteer to work, um, with us and make our city better. And, and so I think it could be really powerful. Um, as an economic driver and as a community resource and a, a way to, post-pandemic, kind of a, a gift to the city in a way for us to come back together. Councilmember Thompson, I'm sure you have something to add.
I mean, we had a discussion around this last month and it seemed like everybody was super enthusiastic about it. And I don't really know how you could not be enthusiastic about something that brings the community together like this. Um, I, I love that your idea was in Asia. Mine, um, I've kind of been trying to recreate something similar that happens in Spain, um, which coincidentally is a, a big producer of olive pits, um, by the way. Um, but in the south of Spain, um, um, people just get together in the street and it's phenomenal. And it's a lot of fun and I think our community's gonna absolutely love it.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think it's important to recognize as well, this is very exciting to me. Thank you for bringing it before us. Both, um, Councilmember Dour and Thompson, this is really exciting because, you know, we're almost, um, um, overdone with, with, um, with farmer's markets. Just almost everywhere there's a farmer's market. This is a creative idea. It's an opportunity for us to celebrate different cultures and to also be able to have, have young people come down and have music and dance. I always remember on, before the Fourth of July, on July third, we always had music down on Festival Street. And we'd have a band come and you'd see everybody dancing and having such a good time. We could bring this back, it would be wonderful. So thank you for bringing it before us, Councilmember Dour and Thompson. I'm very excited about this.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I keep forgetting that I have a lame mouse here and I'm just sitting here moving a mouse and it's doing nothing. Anyway, sorry about that. Um, yes, we can barely become a, um, a, uh, very unique and, uh, fun gathering, hip and happening kind of place, which I really love. Um, and of course, the multicultural, I think also a piece that, that we've all been craving. Um, I think also what staff had presented on different options for closing on around Mount, Main Street and around Main Street, Festival Street, and we talked about, um, circu- a new normal and people being able to circulate, this, this fits right up that alley. So the one question I have is because, uh, we lost a couple of really good people in COVID. And would we be able to use ARPA funds to, to do the staffing? Cause these, the staffing is a big price ticket. I wanna be, I don't, I don't, if we can use ARPA funds and still have the city function, that would be a good thing. So can we use ARPA for any of these positions?
So yes, you can. Um, you can use ARPA funds if we make them limited term positions and then you can discuss in a, in a future budget if you want to continue with the ARPA funds funding limited term, or if you want to transition them into the general fund, um, as regular positions.
But ARPA could buy us two years on this position while we get up and running and, and hopefully that this event will start, becomes self-sustaining. Our general fund grows with it and it can be permanent, right?
Certainly.
Okay, all right. My support.
Okay. So, uh, I'd like to ask, ask the sponsors if you're willing to fund this with ARPA funds for a couple of years for starters. I see one.
Yeah, I mean, if, why would we use unrestricted funds when we could use restricted funds?
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I'm definitely in support of this. And, and did you know that Corning, California is the olive pit capital of the world? I didn't know that.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Director Stroop, for, for, for this information.
I did know that, but I, I know really random information.
Okay, so we have overwhelming for support for that one as well and funding that through ARPA. So thank you very much. All right. Next item, we're getting on a roll now. Uh, next item, uh, are we actually done with Nick? I mean, Director Stroop, uh, Fun Cross Walk. This is, uh, sponsored by Deputy Mayor Zornz. So I'll turn it over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Oh my goodness, I wasn't unmuted, I was unmuted, sorry about that. I ah, I wish I could see a raise of hands for people who know about Ministry of Silly Walks, but I can't see anybody. Don't embarrass me. You all should know about Ministry of Silly Walks. It's a classic. I was just talking about this with someone. In fact, if you can quickly Google, no, I don't think you should do that during council. But you should see how many cities across this, uh, across the world have a Ministry of Silly Walks and what it's, it's great for all ages. I'm a cheap date tonight. I even had someone offer to come and do the painting on this. So I would love to see this coming from Lidle House across to maybe the, uh, well, it wouldn't be the parking lot, it would be the sidewalk through, through the unfinished part of, um, the landing. But it is possible to put this here to be hours and hours of entertainment for all age groups to either sit and partici- to either participate or sit and watch. Um, I would love to see a Ministry of Silly Walks that just crosses the street and allows people to have a moment of whimsy as they're going from point A to point B.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I wanted to mention that, uh, interim Public Works Director Jacqueline Brandonberg is here as well as, uh, I think Parks Director Nick Stroop is still here as well. So, all right, uh, Councilmember Dour.
How could we say no to Councilmember Zorn on this? She is the cheapest date going. And it sounds delightful. I'm sure when I, when my kids were younger, they would have completely adored this idea. And isn't that Monty Python, where this came from, or John Cleese? How can you say no? So thanks for bringing this idea to us.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
I'm just impressed we've got two directors here for a four hundred dollar item.
We're bringing the big.
Interim Director Brandonberg, I hope this wasn't the only thing that you needed to be here tonight for, like, I mean, yeah, how do you, how do you say no to four hundred bucks? I'm in.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Yes, I think it's wonderful. And I have never done it, but I'm looking forward to it. And so I do support it. And I also want to say, you know, Nick Stroop, Director of Parks, you have been famous tonight. We are so excited to see all the good things we're gonna do for you and for our parks. So thanks for being this far, Jean.
Thank you. Councilmember Agnew.
As has been said before, how can you say no to that?
Excellent. Uh, Mayor Olson.
Yeah, I just want to see, uh, the deputy mayor and her first walk across it. I mean, that's, that's worth it right there.
I will be there. I'll be there.
I think the ribbon cutting will be worth the price of admission. Yes, Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah, maybe we could have a special meeting and all do it together.
Excellent.
In a picture.
All right. Overwhelming support for, uh, Fun Cross Walk, uh, Ministry of Silly Walks. Thank you. All right. We also, uh, another sponsored by Council, uh, Deputy Mayor Zornz, uh, if you'd like to take that over. And again, we have staff here to support.
So I, I was looking at this, it doesn't look that it's a burden, especially burdensome to the staff, which is, uh, important. Uh, it's also borne by the people who ask, not this, not the city cost spread out through the city. Also, cheap date again, right? Um, but what I really feel that it's important to do is that it builds, uh, community and ownership within Bothell where people can identify their areas that they live in. Um, and, uh, just put a little marker, it's a sign blade, goes right on top of the sign. Um, and I also appreciated staff, what did, uh, that they pro- provide, this is a quote, provide some proof of consensus. Um, so, uh, very well thought out. My thanks to staff on noodling this and coming up with a way to manage this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Agnew.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Dour.
Can I ask a procedural question? Like, are, are we think of doing, are we thinking of doing it all at once? Or just, uh, maybe a certain number per year? How do we see this playing out? Do we, do we know? Do we have a plan?
Yeah, so I do want to clarify that in what's in our proposal, because it may not one hundred percent meet the intent of the original request. Um, since the city doesn't have a formal neighborhood program, we don't have the resources for the city to initiate uh, a, a survey and, and determine neighborhoods that are unsigned and, and, you know, determine the neighborhood names and sign them. So this would really, um, our proposal is this would be more of a neighborhood-driven request. And the procedure would be similar to the renaming we just went through for 188. The neighborhood would drive the request. They would do the bulk of the legwork as far as getting consensus, some type of consensus from the neighborhood. Um, and then we provide them with, you know, a quote, um, what it would take for installation and, and approval. So, um, it, it would really be a neighborhood driven program. If we were to go the route of a city driven program and look at the city as a whole, that, that would take, that would, we would be coming back to request resources to, and to talk about how to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, oh, and I'm in support. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. Uh, I am in support, but I think it has to have some guidelines around it because I think of, I think of neighborhoods that used to be called Munger. And who knows what Munger is today? No one knows what Munger is. I do because I've been here 58 years and I know that Munger was developed up here in West Hill. And then there's another neighborhood that, um, what is that one? Oh, that was not bad. That one's a good one. Tall Trees is a good one because now you, it, it has some, you know, relationship to the area. So there needs, will you create guidelines? Is my question.
Yeah. Our plan was if, if there was council consensus, can, uh, you know, consensus tonight, that we would kind of develop a procedural plan and, and what those guidelines would be. And so I don't have an answer for you tonight. We probably have to have more conversation with city staff about, um, what those guidelines would be. Do we just allow the neighborhood with consensus to decide what the neighborhood name is? That's one option, but unfortunately I don't believe we have a neighborhood program where the city establishes neighborhood names. So I'm not sure, um, I, I'm not sure exactly what those guidelines would be, but the thought is we can do some brainstorming and figure that out.
I would support it if we could do that because I think it's important that while they build consensus amongst the neighbors, you know, history goes on and on and on. And you want to make sure that it has some relationship to like tall trees, to the area there is. So I would support it, but I would like to see some guidelines developed.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, did I see your card again? Card again?
Yeah, 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 you did. I, I, I think one resource that we could tap into, uh, Landmark's probably very busy, but that's, that's one area that we could tap into. And then our museum, they're a wealth of knowledge of the history of Bothell. So, and I can think of a couple of members who are on the museum board who also would, I'm volunteering them. But, uh, we've got some good brain trust that can, um, confirm areas of regional names.
Mayor Olson.
Yeah, you, you beat me to those suggestions for those groups and those resources. But, uh, but yeah, I, I think this is, uh, a good opportunity to build a same framework for developing more community and opportunities for that.
Okay. I think we had majority support for that. Right. Moving right along. Next one, uh, I think this is the last one from Deputy Mayor Zorn, a little bit bigger ticket on this one. So, um, perhaps more conversation. Uh, so Deputy Mayor Zorn's handing it over to you.
Uh, just a little bit bigger. Um, that wasn't a, you know, tiptoe and then come in with the, uh, heavy, heavy item. But I think this, I suspect this is something all council would support as we're talking about ways to, we, we still have to vote on, decide on Main Street. The degree to which it's being closed, Festival Street, we know needs to be closed periodically. So, um, I would think it would just be a given that ballards would be part of that discussion. And knowing what that estimated cost is going to be is going to help us, um, decide how we go about closing the streets. And that's all I have to present on that is, you know, do you want to make that part of the discussion?
And staff does believe that we could use ARPA funds for, for these improvements as part of that economic development or economic support. Councilmember Doer.
I can't get it to show up. Yes, yes. A thousand times yes. Absolutely. I support this and I, I love that we can use ARPA funds. And who knows, once our Friday night market takes off, we could have culturally themed crafts for sale. Just saying.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm for this. This is right in my wheelhouse. Um, but I have one question. So right now we have it designated for, uh, one block on 101st in between 185th and 183rd. And then we have a block that would not be, have the same ability to be closed. And then we have Main Street right over there. I would love it if we could make just two blocks down from City Hall. So we could have a contiguous pedestrian experience through there when we decided to, to have an event or close that down. It would also just give us a ton more real estate and it'd be able to just be more flexible in terms of what events we could do. So I guess my question would be, how much more would it cost to do that? And is there, am I, am I on an island and thinking that a contiguous space would be better?
So from a cost perspective, I can ask Steve to jump in here in a minute, but part of the conversation we had around that is you, then you have to discern, determine, are you just closing that additional block or are you then closing both intersections on either side of that block? Cause that, um, causes the, the cost to grow exponentially. Cause then you need ballards on each, you know, all four sides of the intersection. And then in addition, we factored, uh, traffic flow into that. So if you were to get to a point where we had a request to close both those blocks plus Main Street, you essentially are limiting traffic flow through all of downtown. In addition, the condition of the sidewalks and that portion of the block would, should be a factor. Steve, do you have anything to add to that?
I mean, I think we're in the planning phase and conceptualizing phase. So that's something we could look at and consider and come back and tell you what that additional cost would be. I think Jaclyn pointed out some of the, the hurdles we would have to look at. One additional hurdle that I think you'd have to look at is as an example, if you can imagine 101st closed from 185th to Main Street. 183rd, the people coming down from the east of the west would have to turn around somewhere. We don't want to make them turn around in a private driveway. We could make them turn around at City Hall, but then you close off the other private driveway. So we would really have to take a look at that. And as things change and develop in downtown, um, the driveways kind of move as well. So we'd have to be smart about it. And so I think it would require us to give a little bit of thought. But I think if you start with, at a minimum, this is what we'd like to do. You know, you know, all designs go through a thought process and we can go through that thought process.
I mean, if at the very least we left, um, 103rd open through there and there was just like, you had to cross the street to get to the, to the next pedestrian zone. And it was just one street. I mean, I, I still think that would be a much better experience and still give us a lot more room. So, um, yeah, in for the conceptualizing process, in for the ballards. I love ballards. Bring me all the ballards.
Thank you.
Like, like Nick loves olive pits.
Oh boy. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Please save, please save us.
Save you. So first of all, I want to say when I'm in France and I'm going in Nap- in Naples, France, and I'm going down the streets, the ballards go up for the people to go to the restaurants and the shops, and then they go down for the delivery trucks to come in. And it is, I mean, hydraulic ballards are, gives us such a choice about when we want to open it, when we need to close that street. I am all for this and I don't know exactly how you're going to plan it to do 101st and, and Main Street, but I'm going to leave it up to you to figure that out for me. Thank you. And I love this. Thank you so much, Jean, for bringing it for us.
Thank you. So that to me looks like a majority. So I think we're good on that one. And that is the end of our list. You all did so well. Thank you. So, um, it appears that you, uh, a, a majority of you supported all of the items. So I think that, uh, we have a package. All right. Thank you again for all of this. And, um, Mayor Olson, I'm going to turn it back to you because this is hard.
You did a great job. Always with a smile. So thank you for that. Um, so yeah, that takes us through our agenda bills. And now we just have our council conversations and we just did a lot of talking. So I'll be curious to see what topics come up after this. So, uh, Councilmember Doer.
Uh, I would like us to consider adjournment.
We have Deputy Mayor Zorn's that has a really quick item that she wants to, I think, mention this real.
Does Deputy Mayor Zorn's do really quick?
Yes.
Hey, quicker than you. Hey, first off, I love you guys. I mean, it's really fun to see everything that we care about coming through fruition. And, and when I'm done, I know Councilmember McNeil has something to say. So Robin was going to, so I, I have, there we go. This is my hero. And, um, I'm going to challenge you guys to come up with a hero and add your hero. I want to tell you about this young man there. His name is Joshua Warren. He's a resident of Bothell. He was a huge skateboard supporter and, uh, built quite a bit of community here in Bothell. He died a couple of years ago of metastatic colon cancer. So if your bodies are ever giving you a signal of something not being right, get it checked out. But I want to tell you about why he's a hero here in Bothell. Um, he, he used to have bike repair workshops just in his front yard and neighbors would come and bring their bikes and he would fix it for them. Sometimes they would just show up at his door and fix them. He also helped monitor traffic that was coming out of an unnamed church. I mean, you can choose a couple, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to put any undue pressure. But according to his wife, what he would do is he'd put those sunglasses on, go out with his cup of coffee and just wave to people. And they would just wave back and they would slow it down. Another reason to be a hero. Another thing, this is also up on, uh, I think, uh, Councilmember Thompson would appreciate about him. He would throw his youngest child into a bike cart, trailer, throw his child who was up at school, her bike on the front of his bike and ride those bikes up to school and pick up, um, their daughter, his daughter, and they would ride back home. That is a dedicated dad. Um, but let me tell you something else that, uh, his widow told me. The most beautiful thing about his passing was the community. So, so we've gone from this hero of Joshua Warren to the community at large. When he passed, one of his daughters had a birthday and our police department came through, enter another heroes spawn heroes. And our, our police department came through and made her birthday party. This is during COVID, a big deal. While he was passing, neighbors and friends formed and even strangers formed, formed over three months of food, uh, a food train and watching her kids so she could be at the hospital with them. And then here's the last thing that his passing helped build community. On a social media page, someone said, I'm going to Fred Meyer. Can I get you anything? And she said, it's my anniversary. If you could just get me a small bouquet of flowers, I would love it. And in this community, yet another hero was born and she brought a huge, according to Ginger, it was a huge, it was not a Fred Meyer bouquet. It was a huge bouquet. And other people on the social media page sent her flowers and they sent her chocolate and they sent her cards. And so I just want to give a nod to Josh Warren because out of his life, he was a hero and other heroes came from him. So, thank you for those unsung, unsung heroes in Bothell who impact our lives. And I'm hoping that we can showcase more of them as time goes on.
Thanks, Jean. Councilmember Doer.
I promise I'm not going to try to adjourn. Um, I actually, um, council member, so we're Deputy Mayor Zorn's. This is a great full circle moment because when I mentioned the skate park and the, the testimony that we received, one of the very well spoken young children who came and begged us for a skate park was one of Ginger Warren's children.
I bet. I bet. Yeah. Yeah. Pretty incredible family.
I cried then and now I'm tearing up. So.
I was just going to say, is it getting dusty in here or is it just me?
Councilmember McNeil, did you, you had your card up earlier?
Yep. I had my card up and, uh, Deputy Mayor Zorn's, um, amazing, amazing story about our community, people within our community. You know, we, we often go out and we talk to many folks regionally and when we're on these different committees and stuff. And, and one of the things that's, uh, I've been having more and more conversations about recently made me want to just say thank you to all of you. As a person of color who has been born and raised in Washington, um, and from this area, the work that we're doing, um, sometimes goes unnoticed. And I, I want to, from the bottom of my heart, tell you thank you. And the reason I say that is because I recently have, was having a conversation. And it led me to recognize something I would not have recognized unless I had had this conversation. And it was about a day, it was about yesterday, actually. It was about recognizing indigenous people there. And, um, having this conversation led me to research a little bit about the history of Bothell. And I was really surprised to learn that in 1890, um, with some loggers, from that came the Bothell we are today. And, um, Councilmember Doer will probably remember this, but I got pretty emotional. My emotional day was in 2017 when, when we passed an ordinance about, not, about making our city a welcoming city for all. We, we passed that first, um, ordinance resolution and, um, that was an emotional day for me because I'm from here. Um, and all the things that we have done since, um, internally with, with dive in and conversations we're having and leading to the DEI and just all the internal conversations we have amongst ourselves and out without, with other regional leaders around the, the region. I just wanted you to know how I feel and that I'm thankful. And, um, I feel welcome in my community. Um, we have a long way to go and a lot of work to do to ensure that all people feel welcome uh, from all walks of life. But I just wanted you to know how I feel. And, and I think, I think it's important that we have tough conversations. But we ensure that everybody has a voice at the table, uh, that we include those voices that are at the table. And just, I feel lucky to be serving my community. Um, I'm honored to be serving my community. And I'm, and I'm thankful that I'm serving it with you guys. So thank you.
I appreciate you for sharing that, James. Just want to make sure I was off mute. But yeah, no, this has been a, a great council and I appreciate everyone that's on it. And it's nights like this that, you know, just really reflect how much we can work together and care for the community and, and, uh, makes it a, a pleasure to come to these meetings. Councilmember McCollough.
Well, I, I really do want to say thank you to all of you. First of all, for bringing such important budget issues before us that we really care about funding for the community. And second of all, for supporting each of us, um, in our quest for making a better community, a better place for our people to live. So if you think about the budget issues we passed tonight, most of them had a lot to do with building community.
So if you think about the budget issues we passed tonight, most of them had a lot to do with building community. And I just appreciated very much the support I received from all of you. And I was pleased to also offer that support for your um, budget proposals as well. We did a great job tonight working together. I really appreciate it.
Yep. Is it time to go celebrate ballards?
I move that. And thank you, everyone. It was, it was, I'm a little punch drunk at all that we got done today.
And I'll see, we'll see y'all at the Friday market.
For sure.
Or next Tuesday.
Probably that too.
Well, good night, everybody. You're into good night sleep. Bye.
Good morning.